Okay, I would like to call the July 8th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting to order. I'm going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Can we have a consideration of approval of minutes from June 24th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting?
Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve the minutes from the June 24th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None?
Now we just wait till 9:05 for our first item, just so you guys aren't looking at us.
A collective coma up front here.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Before the first item, were you going to have citizens' input?
Yes, we will.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Ma'am, if you have a moment?
Hello?
Test, test. You good? I think she got it.
Testing. That's good, right? I think I'm good to go. Thank you.
Okay, it's 9:05. If we have any citizens' input, please come up to the mic and state your name.
My name is Don Van Pelt, and I'm here to question the deficiency of the notice that was provided to me by the planning staff, that it was inaccurate, and I request this hearing to be delayed because it wasn't properly noticed.
So you're speaking on one of our agenda items?
Yes.
This is just for anything that's not on the agenda?
All right, thank you.
Commissioner, Mr. Chair, if I may? So this is the item I had asked to speak on after public comment. The notices that went out for this meeting, for each and all of the items, is my understanding, were missing the element of time in their notice. Now, the rules governing notice require certain elements. These notices had all of them. As I said, the only missing element was the time of the meeting for today. California law allows for notice to be considered sufficient so long as it meets substantially compliant with the rule. And in this case, all of the other information was present in the notice. And in my assessment, because the Planning Commission is always at 9 o'clock, I think that these notices were substantially compliant. However, I'll leave it to your commission to determine whether you would like to continue on the assessment that these notices are substantially compliant with the rule, or to continue and have the items re-noticed.
So, just to be clear, there was other links or other ways that they could actually confirm the, not only the agenda item, but the time of, time certain, correct?
That is correct. And the, and California law does also provide that if a person has actually shown up for a meeting, they have received actual notice of the meeting. So if a person has arrived to speak about insufficiency of notice, the notice was sufficient enough that they made it here to comment, correct?
Thank you. I'm not sure how my, how the other commissioners feel, but I'm, I'm okay with moving forward on the items.
I'm prepared to proceed. I think a 9 o'clock starting time is well established, and the time of the actually public noticed agenda items was provided.
Okay, I'm in agreement. Any thoughts, Commissioner Travis?
I agree. I agree. I also think that everybody else has here wouldn't be fair for wasting their time to come here. So I say we continue.
Okay, with that, we'll take up our 9:05 a.m. item, Public Hearing to Consider Approval. Approving Use Permit, UP 21-10, Applicant Owner Source, HVR Inc., Viona LLC, Location 11650 High Valley Road, Clear Lake Oaks, California 95423, A Property Consisting of 1,639.96 Acres, APN 006-004-07, Turn it over to staff.
Good morning, everybody. I do have a presentation today, PowerPoint presentation, so I'm just going to get this up here. Okay, so this is item number one, Major Use Permit Presentation to the Planning Commission from the Community Development Department, County of Lake. My name is Catherine Schaefer, so I'm an assistant planner here. Okay, so the applicant is Sowers HVR Incorporated, represented by Elliot Howell and Avi Polak. This is Major Use Permit 2110 and Initial Study 2110. So the agenda today for this presentation, the permit request, followed by the project description, the site description, project analysis, and then recommendation and conditions. So the applicant seeks approval of major use permit to cultivate 3,485,000 square feet of outdoor cannabis located within 6,98,400 square feet of cultivated area. Please note that in the attachment for the conditions of approval, there is a minor edit, a clerical error on my end. The total cultivation area is 6,98,400 square feet. And construction of structures to support the cultivation. Staff has determined that the project qualifies for this license under Article 27, Subsection 18. So the applicant is seeking approval of a major use permit to complete the following activities onsite: 80 A-Type III Outdoor Cultivation Licenses, 1 A-Type IV Nursery License for a total of 5 acres, 1 Type XI Distribution. The site is approximately 7 miles northwest of the city of Clear Lake. And I'll have more location information as we go on. The recommendation today, approval of Major Use Permit 2110 with several conditions outlined in full in the staff report and contingent upon clearance of violations with the Lake County Grading Ordinance and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. Site Description. The site is located off of High Valley Road. It includes 7 clustered APNs for approximately 1,639.96 acres. Commercial cannabis activities will only take place on APN 006-004-07, which is about 649.28 acres. The predominant zoning is rural lands and agriculture, but there are also subzones of scenic combining and waterway combining. The total acreage requirement for the proposed licenses is 1,620 acres. This acreage requirement is met with clustering. So staff reviewed the project for concurrence with the Lake County General Plan, Shoreline Area Plan, and the zoning ordinance. Staff determined that this project is consistent with the above. Commercial cannabis cultivation is a permitted use in the A or Agriculture RL Rural Lands, Waterway Combining WW, and SC Scenic Combining upon issuance of a Major Use Permit. So the topography of the cultivation parcel, which is the one pointed out here, is between 0% to 10% grade where cultivation would occur. It is not located within a community growth boundary. The green areas that you see on the map are federally owned land, so it's not within an exclusion area. All right, so the recommendation, this Major Use Permit submitted by Sowers HVR Inc. is recommended to be categorized as a mitigated negative declaration as staff has determined that all impacts can be mitigated and reduced to less than significant. The mitigations are outlined on Attachment 4, the proposed conditions of approval, and in Attachment 7, the initial study. Okay, so there were public comments on this project, so I'll be going through these one by one. The first is odor or air quality. So the concern was that dust from cultivation activities and ambient marijuana odor would permeate the area and cause undue stress to neighbors and public nuisance. These issues are addressed in Initial Study, Attachment 7, pages 25 to 28, and also have relevant mitigation measures. This is AQ 1 through 8. Also in the Property Management Plan, Attachment 2, pages 9 through 11, and also in the proposed conditions of approval, Attachment 4, pages 4 through 5. What these resources are saying for the project is that the marijuana activities would be located far enough away from the road, the setbacks would be maintained so that the odor wouldn't permeate the area. Also for... So the staff report is just presenting the information. Public comment will be later. So in the staff report and in the attachments that we see here, we have a couple of different resources where the applicant has addressed these concerns. Public comment can be later. So when we have the three resources here, the other thing that they're mentioning is that in the structures where the cannabis will be processed, there will be air filtration systems so that the processing facility inside will not have any ambient odors. The next concern is the potential for increase in traffic collisions and complaints. The applicant addressed this complaint in the Initial Study, Attachment 7, Section, let's see, 17, Transportation, page 54. There are no known capacity issues within the roughly 3-mile segment of High Valley Road from the town of Clear Lake to the project area. The applicant will encourage ride sharing and carpool amongst commuting workers to reduce vehicle trips. On-site housing will be provided to accommodate about 10 employees. This is the applicant's response to this concern. The next concern is security. The location and design of security systems discourages theft and, by extension, home invasion in the area. The applicant has addressed these concerns in the Property Management Plan, Attachment 2, pages 37 to 40, the site plans, Attachment 5, pages 8 and 9. The gist of these is that the security systems will be thorough. They will be at the entrance to the property as well as all the cannabis locations, all the fields, all the places where cannabis will be stored. So if you'd like to look over those, that's site plans, Attachment 5, pages 8 and 9, and property management, Attachment 2, pages 37 to 40. The next concern is water. There is a few slides on this one to address as much as I can and provide as much detail and background for the aquifer in High Valley. Within the project, demanding approximately 354 acre-feet annually, that's about 115 million, 351, 219 gallons. How will this affect neighboring wells? What are the cumulative impacts with the wineries and other large cannabis operations on the High Valley groundwater aquifer? Okay, so taking a couple sources here, the Lake County Water Inventory and Analysis. This was a document that was produced in 2006. If we look through this document, pages 2, 22 to 23, these documents were not provided as attachments as this portion of the presentation is a response to the public commentary. So I put the references up here if you would like to take a look at these as well. From this snapshot, the volcanics were initially a productive aquifer. However, well yield has reduced over time. So the High Valley basin is mostly a volcanic aquifer. And over time, it has mostly been recharged by precipitation, rainwater, and has been highly productive. But there's a couple things to note here. The alluvial aquifer portion of High Valley is recharged through direct precipitation. Groundwater levels in High Valley have slow recovery after droughts. After the drought of 1976, spring groundwater levels have declined or had declined about 45 feet, and it took five years for water levels to recover to the pre-1976 levels. That's 5 to 10 feet in the summer during an average year. The trend of slow recovery is indicative of low recharge rates to the basin. The Department of Water Resources estimated storage capacity of High Valley to be about 9,000 acre-feet of storage between depths of 10 to 100 feet, and usable storage capacity approximately 900 acre-feet. Okay, so what this means is we have to take a look at something called safe yield. This comes from the Lake County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 28, Groundwater, Section 28.2. Safe yield is the amount of water which can be withdrawn without exceeding in any calendar year the water supply of the basin, lowering water levels as to make further drilling of water wells uneconomical, and causing water to be pumped from the basin to deteriorate below drinking water standards. So if these conditions are met, the amount of water that is drawn can be said to be safely yielded. All right, in the Initial Study, Attachment 7, Utilities and Service Systems, approximately 60 to 70% of the irrigation water will be returned to the aquifer through infiltration in an average year. So that's what we have from the Initial Study. Additional information can be found here. There was a water memo provided by the applicant on February 5th, 2021. It was about aquifer performance testing. An aquifer performance test was performed on Well 4, which is the main well for the property, on October 7th, 2020, to evaluate the yield of the well and hydraulic parameters of the aquifer. A step drawdown was performed in which Well 4 was pumped at increasing rates, and the corresponding drawdown on the water level in the well was measured. The well was pumped at 100, 150, 250, and 380 gallons per minute. The maximum drawdown observed in the well was 11.02 feet at 380 gallons per minute. This equates to a specific capacity of approximately 34.46 gallons per minute per foot. The estimated transmissivity of the aquifer is approximately 564, 467 feet per day. Quick side note here, there is another resource. I did not put it on this PowerPoint as I just found it out late last night. In 2012, there was also a water report done on Well 4 as well as within a well next door from Brassfield Winery. These two wells were studied over the course of that year for their yield. 61 acre-feet for High Valley was the annual usage at that time. So this was 2012, and those were from those two wells that had taken from there. I have that reference here with me if you'd like to ask questions about that, too. Okay, in the applicant's water memo provided by, provided February 5th, 2021, there will also be a proposed irrigation well located near the nursery. Based on the information contained therein, the applicant's consultant, Kimberly Horn, messaged me the amount of drawdown in the aquifer at the new irrigation well based on an average withdrawal weight, withdrawal weight, gosh, of 740,070 gallons per day. Utilizing this drawdown equation, the maximum predicted drawdown in the aquifer is .3 feet, .30 feet at the proposed well location. At 500 feet from the well, the aquifer drawdown is estimated at .13 feet. Okay, so the applicant's consultant is here today to answer questions if need be on these water, water memo or other things as well. Okay, moving on to the public comment, dust grading. The concern, possible grading activities during early activation and large amounts of dust. Okay, avoidance of these grading activities are mentioned in the applicant's following documents: the Initial Study, Attachment 7, page 12; the Initial Study, page 30, Biological Resources; Property Management Plan, Attachment 2, page 27; and the Biology Report, Attachment 6, page 13. These resources collectively indicate that all setbacks will be observed when doing any type of tilling of the land, and that no watercourses will be graded through. All right, background of the property. Historically managed as agricultural lands that supported grazing and farming practices. The project site is flat with about 0% to 10% slopes. Okay, timeline of the dust and the grading complaints, and also the notice of violation by the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. In April and May of 2021, the applicant reached out to the Resource Planner for site assessment. On May 3rd, 2021, the applicant submitted grading questionnaire in which the Resource Planner responded that annual tilling would be covered under the ag-exempt grading permit. June 7th, 2021, UP 2110 was early activated. The applicant allowed, was allowed to prep the site for planting, and which is an ag-exempt activity. In June 8th of 2021, grading and dust complaints received by the Community Development Department, and pictures of the activity were taken by our grading inspector. On July 7th, 2021, yesterday, an email was forwarded on by the applicant from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife stating multiple violations observed in the project area. At this point, the Community Development Department reached out to the California Department of Fish and Wildlife to clarify the violations and to ensure that what is stated in the letter is accurate, and it is. Okay, so some context here from the timeline. Tilling on a site to prepare for planting is considered exempt from requiring a grading permit if the site has historically been grazed or farmed. However, all other elements of the grading ordinance must be followed. This includes respecting setbacks, sticking out of Class 1, 2, 3, or 4 watercourses, and any drainages that have the potential to convey water. This is an excerpt from the CDFW letter that outlines the violations. 1602 violations, that's the number of the code, not the amount of violations, included trenching into the bed bank and channel of tributaries to Schindler Creek, grading and deep ripping of the cultivation site up to the edge of tributaries to Schindler Creek, and creating dirt roads over tributaries to Schindler Creek. The cannabis cultivation site plan delineated a minimum 50-foot setback from unnamed tributaries surrounding the cultivation area. Grading and deep ripping occurred into the 50-foot setback, sometimes right up to the edges of the unnamed tributaries. This is also a violation of the Lake County Grading Ordinance. Grading within the 50-foot setback, and in some cases directly within the watercourse channels, are in violation of the Lake County zoning ordinance. Exemption from the requirements of obtaining a grading permit shall not be deemed to grant authorization for any work to be done in violation of the provisions of this chapter or any other laws or ordinance of this jurisdiction, and any grading performed in violation of this chapter shall be unlawful and deemed a public nuisance. Okay, these are the requirements to find a major use permit approved. No detrimental impacts must be found to neighbors. Project shape is adequately sized. Streets and highways can accommodate the project. Adequate public and private services are there for the project. It conforms, and there's no violations to county code. Cannabis Article 27 complies with all developmental standards. Applicant qualified to make application and meets all qualifications of the permit. Staff has determined that the proposed project complies with the major use permit findings with some caveats that we presented. Here's the recommendation. Approval of Major Use Permit 2110 with proposed conditions of approval and the inclusion of this condition. Prior to approval, the applicant shall present proof of violation clearance with the, with Lake County, let's see here, we have a little box over there. So here's the condition. Prior to approval, the applicant shall present proof of violation clearance with the Lake County Grading Ordinance and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. Clearance may include, but is not limited to, remediation work as needed, payment of the Lake County grading fee, inspection and finalization of the remediated activities, contingent upon clearance of violations with the Lake County Grading Ordinance and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. In the conditions of approval document, which were written and uploaded last week before we had the notice of violation, the adoption of mitigated negative declaration, IS 2110, air quality, dust palatives, equipment requirements, access and parking requirements are included therein. For biological resources, active nests and vegetation removal, there are some conditions there. If any vegetation removal goes beyond a depth of 12 inches, that does incur grading permits, and if activeness are found, then monitoring needs to happen. Noise, limited hours, and DBA levels are included in the conditions of approval. Cultural resources, if cultural resources are found during ground disturbance, all work will cease and proper agencies contacted for guidance. The proposed permit expiration is July 8th, 2031. All right, that concludes the staff presentation of the use permit.
Thank you. Do we have any questions this time?
Mr. Chair, just a comment about that communication from Department of Fish and Wildlife. It kind of left things hanging there in the presentation. The letter did conclude by saying that the department is confident that Sowers Farms are committed to remeding, remediating the issues we have brought forward. We do not have any objections to the project and look forward to working with Tom and his team on future cultivation projects. That may not be satisfactory to everyone in the room, but that's how the letter concludes.
Right, so let me, like I said, we received this yesterday, so I tried to create some highlights here. So this letter is not an official letter, it's an email. The official letter that's coming from the CDFW, we talked to them yesterday, will be a notice of violation. When we did talk to the representative yesterday, they were confident that the team will be proceeding to correct these violations as soon as possible. They also noticed that the correction of the violations was already apparent when they came upon the site.
So I have a question in regards to the 1,600-plus acres that are a part of this package, and only 80 acres are going to be used for the cultivation. Why, why do we have the 1,600 acres all in total with multiple parcels that aren't even included?
Sure, so this is from article 27, it's called clustering. So when you have an A-type, I think it's three license, it requires 20 acres of cultivation. And you can use multiple parcels to meet an acreage requirement. It's, it's clustering or co-location. There's some requirements there, and I did include in the conditions of approval. So the deed and title has to be held identical on all the parcels. Every parcel individually has to qualify for a cannabis use permit. They cannot be within any exclusion zones or overlay districts for exclusion zones. And also a deed restriction has to be placed on all the parcels if a use permit is granted. That means that they can't apply for another use permit on one of the clustered parcels. So it is allowed in article 27 of the zoning ordinance. It's to meet acreage requirements.
Thank you.
I have a specific question about the staff report. That is where it comes to comments, adverse or not, from public agencies, et cetera. And the staff report says that there are adequate public services to accommodate the project. And then it refers to a letter received from, or email received from California Highway Patrol regarding some concerns about traffic and life on the roads for people of Clear Lake Oaks going into the future. And it says that these concerns have been addressed and mitigated in the initial study under section 13 noise. But I don't see how, I didn't see any mitigation measures for traffic under the noise section, and I don't see how noise would address traffic concerns.
So the, the noise section was about, it was part of, part of that answer. I have the rest of it here.
I'd like to hear it.
Yeah, I can provide clarification. All right.
Wasn't there got, got your question, Catherine? I just didn't see anything that addressed the issue of traffic as raised by CHP.
So this one, there, there is, I just have to find it because I remember looking at this yesterday. Just off the top of my head, so the CHP concern is about tra, sorry. The CHP concern is about traffic collisions as well as.
It's on page 28 of the public comments.
Yes. Right, sorry, I didn't put that footnote down there. So the CHP comment is about traffic collisions as well as an amount of traffic that the community has not seen. And so the concern was that there would be more complaints, there'd be more collisions, and there would be more, more of that. So from, from the standpoint of the staff, the way that I can address that is that there hasn't really been a history of these types of incidents there, but it's because we don't have that type of data, because we don't have that type of use yet. So we do have the applicant's team of consultants here, so this might be something that could be further explained by them if wanted.
Sure, I just, I didn't understand the reference in the staff report to that having been addressed.
I think when I was thinking about noise, there were some, the connection was that noise would be happening between such and such hours. And so those were the times where we'd have most traffic. And so that's what I was trying to point to, I was trying to make that type of connection.
That was mine.
Okay, I, I think too, you know, looking at the documents, I'm really puzzled why an environmental impact report isn't a part of the package. The concerns with water, the drought, the study referenced from 2006, how does that adequately account for today's conditions regarding water? The biological concerns that are raised with the amount of land use. I have several bullets on cultural resources that are concerned. And then also the traffic. I, I live on Sulphur Bank Drive, which is a road probably the size of the road heading up to the site. And there are semi-trucks now traveling down that site to a cultivation that, from the information I looked at, are not a part of the identified vehicles that are serviced in that location. And so with this notice from Fish and Wildlife, to me, it raises a lot of concerns in terms of the, the team, the applicant, if they're not operating in good faith, I have a lot of concerns. And so maybe it would be appropriate for their team to, I don't know how we're gonna, how many members of the team are here, do you know? Anybody? Okay.
I can talk to everything except the hydrology.
Would you, would you rather open up to public comment and have the public address their concerns than have the applicant maybe?
Yeah, let's, let's go ahead.
If I may, commissioners?
Yep.
It might be prudent to hear from the applicant first and then the public, and then return back to your discussion.
Okay, sounds good. Can you come up, please, and identify yourself and who you represent? Right here, this seat right here in front of us.
Oh.
Yeah, that's. My name is Brad Stoneman, I work for Kinley Horn. And we wrote the SEQA document, project management plan, and did the hydrology report, technical study for the project. There's the specific questions asked previously.
Would you like to address my question about transportation and potential traffic impacts?
Yes, sir. So the, I'll just, it'd be easier if I just, based on the SEQA checklist, which is what we use to determine what type of environmental report is required, the initial study checklist. The transportation has four questions that we respond to. And then based on that, if I'm saying things that you guys already know, stop me. Determine the level of impact. So there's a significant impact, a less than significant impact with mitigation incorporated, no impact, or just a less than significant impact. So under transportation, the four questions, or the first question is conflict with, or would a project conflict with a program, plan, ordinance, or policy addressing the circulation system, including transit, roadways, bicycle, or pedestrian facilities? Would the project conflict with or be inconsistent with SEQA guideline 15064.3? This is in regards to vehicle miles traveled. This was a recent update to the SEQA guidelines. It used to be level of service, perhaps you're familiar with that, or A, B, C, D, whatever, and that was more of a time-based and delay-based threshold. As I just said, now it's based on vehicle miles traveled. The Office of Planning and Research has a kind of a threshold of their own at 110 vehicle trips. Should a project trip that 110 threshold, a formal traffic analysis is required based on the project. I think it was probably 60 trips per day during peak cultivation. During off-season hours, that's gonna drop, I think it was to, I have, I have it exactly. If we need it, 15 to 20 trips per day. So that, that's all in regards to B. Substantially increased hazards due to geometric design features, sharp curves, dangerous intersections, or incomplete uses, or incompatible uses, or then result in inadequate emergency access. So the project itself does not modify or propose any changes to the existing roadway, and it would not, so it wouldn't violate threshold C, and it would not result in inadequate emergency access. With all that being said, it is understood that the road is narrow in certain spots. It is signed, there's a speed limit, obviously. I know some of it's been repaved. But in light of the thresholds, there was nothing that would result in a potentially significant impact that would require mitigation. I know that's a long-winded way to.
I got kind of lost in that explanation, to be honest with you.
I apologize.
My concern is that we don't have a lot of control over traffic, and certainly not on state highways or interstate highways. And the planner involved mentioned the catch-22 here is that how do you, how do you study such effects until such traffic is in place? Until then, it's rather speculative. And I honestly didn't hear a lot in your response that addressed what is kind of an open-ended thing.
Yeah, I, I guess the point is, I guess the other point is too with the PSI seminars out there. I know that that generates some amount of traffic when the seminars are in session. I, I guess the, the, it boils down to, based on the SEQA checklist and thresholds that are used, there is not a, there is not a violation of those thresholds, for lack of better words. So then there's the less than significant impact. How was the, how is the school going to be impacted by the traffic? I did see that July 1 was supposed to be delivery of prefab construction materials. And what type of, how was that delivered? What type of vehicles were used to deliver those items? I am, I think the applicant could discuss. I'm not sure what vehicles were used. I know that the vast majority of the traffic, once the construction is complete, will just be passenger vehicles. And I don't know, I don't, there are no commercial vehicles proposed for continuing use. So nothing bigger than the 110 that's described, 110 vehicle use trucks? Yes. Is, is the applicant available for questions?
So I have a little prepared thing that I can read, and then if, you know, more than happy to take questions. So, you know, good morning, commissioners. Thank you for hearing our project today. I want to start by saying that on behalf of.
Could you state your name for the record?
Tom Armstrong. I want to say that on behalf of the HVR team, we're appreciative for the hard work and dedication put forth by the staff, including Catherine Shafers, who we've worked with very closely over the course of this process. I wanted to take a little time to speak about who we are and what we're interested in doing. You know, a lot of you may read into the project and think this is some large corporation backed by private equity or venture capital. In reality, at our core, we're growers and cannabis industry veterans. Much like many of our industry counterparts, we started growing during the Prop 215 days and evolved into what you see here today. In addition to the High Valley Ranch, we have two one-acre permits in Lower Lake. And we continue to operate them in environmentally and financially sustainable businesses. We worked hard, saved our money, and continued to reinvest into this project. From the moment we stepped foot on the High Valley Ranch, we knew this property was special and uniquely suited for cannabis cultivation. At High Valley Ranch, we're situated on agriculturally zoned land with numerous cleared acres within the High Valley wine grape-growing appellation. This land is prime for going quality cannabis, much like it is ideally suited for growing grapes. In the time since we've acquired the ranch, we've worked to build relationships with our neighbors through outreach and transparency. We've contracted with numerous local businesses and moved on to the ranch, making Clear Lake Oaks our home. While we realize the concern over our water usage may be worrisome for some of our neighbors, we're confident that within California, this is as ideal a location for cannabis cultivation as exists within the state. Early on in the process of acquiring the property while doing our due diligence, we went above and beyond what the county or the state mandates, and we had hydrology tests performed. The study concluded that the aquifer we sit on was more than capable of supporting this project. To quote directly from the hydrology report, "The high transmissivity of the quantitarium alluvium aquifer suggests that limited drawdown will occur in the aquifer at the projected water use demands for the project." "This, coupled with the limited number of wells within the vicinity of the project site, suggests that other legal uses of groundwater resource will not be adversely impacted by the increased withdrawals." At HVR, we pride ourselves on being stewards of the land, interested in developing sustainable cannabis operation and integrating into the local community for the long term. We're thrilled to call Clear Lake Oaks home, and we look forward to working with, you know, all involved stakeholders. And with that being said, feel free to, questions? I would like to address a couple points with the violation issue with CDFW. So we had them out there, we submitted multiple, they had three different opportunities to comment on the project. In addition to commenting on the project, they also came out and did a site visit in, let's say, March, April. They inspected the whole site, found no issue. They then came back and obviously had all the maps, had all the plans. They came back and they then deemed that there were some issues, primarily with the setbacks, as Catherine mentioned, from creeks or tributaries. We've already worked on remediating that, we've ordered straw waddle, and we've been in constant communication with not only CDFW, but the Water Board, the regional Water Board, as well as CDFA. We've had multiple meetings on-site with each of those agencies. We actually had a meeting, a cumulative meeting with all three of them, and set forth a plan for remediation. We also filed the new Lake and Stream Bed Alteration Agreement, which is in the middle of being processed, which possibly at the conclusion of this meeting, we might have that in hand. And then as you noted, Commissioner Hess, there was, they stated that they have no objection to the project, CDFW. And that was from the supervisor who issued the no agreement needed letter initially, after coming to the site, like I say, twice and reviewing all the materials initially.
Did they come to the site after you did your grading?
Yeah, so they did, and that.
So, so you went ahead and did your grading and did all of that, and then basically had your violations written up, and then they came and you guys discussed a plan to mitigate after, after you did that.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Precisely.
So, so my concerns in terms of the violations that took place from Fish and Wildlife is, is the fact that you were early activated, you have, had the ability to do certain amount of site preparation. So, so I'm connecting this to the cultural resource concerns that I have. The cultural resource report states that the prehistoric site appears to meet the criteria necessary to be considered a significant historic resource as defined in the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA and in the Public Resource Code number one. And so my concern is, is if this is able to happen, destruction of these cultural resources could happen if not, if there's not proper oversight. And, and the thing I'll, I'll continue to say in respect to cultural resources is that they're non-renewable. If you grade through them without the proper data recovery or plans in place, they're gone forever. And so the fact that this happened makes me concerned in, in the areas of protection and, and preservation. And so what are your, what are your safeguards that are going to be put in place? I know there's some information described, the, you know, fencing off the area, not, not cultivating in that area. But if you decide to, at what point do you re-engage county staff or tribes who have concerns? If you decide to impact those areas that are identified as, that meet the criteria to be considered public resources?
So certainly those are valid concerns, and, and we appreciate them. You know, we would immediately reach out. And, and as a matter of fact, we've had pre-construction surveys going on this entire time. I believe the companies Jacobs, Zoom, and Associates, they've been doing pre-construction surveys this entire time. We adhered to the buffer zones that they provided for sensitive species. They identified one nest on-site, at this point it's a failed nest. And they've cleared us to, to use that land. They're continuing to be out there, they're out there weekly. We're in frequent communication with them. And to the point about that violation, I would just state that because we got this early activation so late, and because of the extensive, the size of the operation. early activation so late, and because of the extensive, the size of the operation, we had to hit the ground running and do all this within a very short period of time. So, while it's not necessarily an excuse, it's just, you know, I mean, we had a lot to do within a month. So, that, you know, these are things that typically would have taken place over three, four months versus, you know, in 30 days, so.
Yeah, that's, and that's, you know, for me, a concern, and nothing in the report defines any staging areas, or have those staging areas been surveyed? Were they a part of the cultural resource study? It doesn't seem that they were. And so in terms of those concerns, I don't know if your representatives have any more information they can provide?
I mean, yeah, the cultural resources did the whole 600 and whatever acre parcel. In terms of staging, we have paved lots where the stuff is staged, and that was paved way before we ever owned the property.
And the firm you mentioned, I don't have any information on that firm, I'm looking at the-
For which?
I'm looking at the archaeological resource report from Dr. John Parker, APN 00600407.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
The firm you just identified, who's doing the current cultural resource identification or providing work to your organization?
Yes.
Jacobson, or he said?
Yeah, Jacob Zune, I can give you the, I don't have my phone on me, but-
Can I clarify? Commissioner? So that is the biological resources follow-up company. They don't, they're not involved with the cultural resources.
He is.
That, John Parker. Dr. John Parker was the archaeologist that performed the cultural resources survey.
If you address the committee, or the commission?
I'm sorry. I'm still new. I apologize. Yeah, so the archaeology report was performed by Dr. John Parker. The initial biological survey was performed by Sequoia Consulting, and then the follow-up biology report was Jacob Zune.
Yes, and the archaeological research was done for the site. The staging areas, or where equipment's going to be parked, would be on previously disturbed areas as part of previous operations within existing parking lots. There was a mapped known archaeological site. The project has been designed to avoid that completely, and be within, outside an existing buffer. There's mitigation in place, requiring notification if any resources are located. I don't know if the site plan exactly shows where the site is. I think we could provide that to you, I don't know, sometimes that's omitted from public documentation.
Correct. Yeah, and I'm looking at the cultural resource study by Dr. Parker, and he identifies the sites not in relationship to any staging areas, in relationship to the cultivation And so the concerns that I have are, even this report can't determine the areas that were surveyed where there was no presence, you can't say one way or the other, there is not going to be items found or not found. And so that leaves it open to be found in the areas that he didn't identify specific resources.
Yes, yes, sir, that's, typically, if there are no resources found within, within an area proposed for disturbance, whether through a field survey or existing record searches, again, that goes back to the mitigation measure, what we'll typically refer to as an inadvertent discovery protocol, which the project is required to comply with if resources are discovered. But again, just reiterate, there is no disturbance to existing known resources.
And inadvertent discovery plan has not been developed, correct?
It, I mean, it's included as mitigation measure CR1. Should any archaeological, paleontological, or cultural materials be discovered during site development, all activity shall be halted, the county shall be notified. If it's human remains, the coroner would be notified, the likely descendant would be notified there too. So, I mean, that's in a very nutshell, but yes, there is a plan in place, sir.
So you have an actual plan outside of the cultural mitigation measure you just identified?
I, there's no, I don't know if the county, county has a formal notification process, I believe, but there's no attached plan to the document, or at least to the, I mean, there typically is not, in terms of the environmental documentation.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
Your consultant mentioned maybe a maximum of 60 trips per day. The initial study refers to 40 to 80 per day. I'm just wondering, what kind of thought did you give to the roads and access in the course of putting all this together?
So, of course, we did, and as many of you probably were, they actually repaved a good portion of that road. Additionally, 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 the previous ownership group, the PSI seminars routinely had seminars there with 75-plus people. They were in and out of there on a regular basis. So, yeah, I don't know, I mean, like I said, there was a decent amount of traffic with that, and in terms of who we would have, employee-wise, staff-wise, I don't think we would increase that by any means. Especially given the onsite housing for some employees. And the seasonality of the operation as well.
Okay, do we have any other questions from the commission? Okay, we'll just-
Both question, and kind of like just a concern. With that school being there, I drive through that road when I go to work as well. And during school, when school is in session, there's obviously already a lot of traffic there, from parents dropping their kids off, to, you know, buses and everything that's going on. It's a small town there. So, my concern would be just, just from that point, that that's the only access that you have to that property?
Yeah, that's the only access, correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll open this up to public comment. Anybody wishing to speak on this item, please state your name, come to the podium, state your name.
Could we have some questions to the speaker who just left?
You can, you can ask the questions, and we can come back, and if they would like to entertain those questions, we can certainly ask them.
If I may, Mr. Chair. Public comment is exactly that, it's just for comment. If the public does issue questions, or their comments raise questions for you, your commission may certainly ask those questions of staff or the applicant. This, however, is not a conversation or back and forth.
Yes, thank you.
Good morning. My name's Maria Khan, I'm a property owner at 12250 High Valley Road. Several, majority of the residents in this valley are extremely opposed to this project because of the severe negative impacts that it will create, and the irreparable damage it will cause to our properties, animals, livestock, wildlife, safety, and quality of life. Many of our families have lived in this valley for over 20 years, and we will protect our right to continue living there in this pristine environment that it is. It's unconscionable to us that a large, major water use project would be installed in our valley, right across the street from another project, the Brassfield Winery. I, myself, have a well, we all have wells. My well has gone dry, and other people's wells are already dry. You know, this just cannot be added to convolute and exacerbate the situation with water here. This, the area we live in, if you've never been in High Valley, is a single-point entry two-lane road. It does enter at Highway 20 directly alongside East Lake Elementary School. That intersection is very congested during the school year times, with buses and parents dropping off and picking up children, and staff trying to get in and out, and people trying to get in and out to go to work from the valley. So, the road itself is mediocre at best, it is not well-maintained, it was not paved nearly anywhere, it was maybe paved a half a mile up, and it's a three-and-a-half-mile road. There is a hairpin turn, one moment. There's a hairpin turn about a half a mile up the road, and we have seen several trucks get stuck because they cannot negotiate that curve. I have a picture of the curve, and I have a picture of a truck that was just caught, stuck there the other day. It took well over 45 minutes to an hour to get that vehicle out of there, and in any sort of emergency situation, a medical emergency, or an evacuation situation, if this should occur, it will be catastrophic to the people in our valley. So I don't know if you'd like to look at these. But this road is narrow, windy, with blind curves and steep slopes, is regular that the residents are dodging vehicles that are going down the center of the road, because the road is simply not wide enough for these large vehicles. So I would argue that the traffic itself, the traffic flow on the congestion that's going to occur, is going to overwhelm the road from a construction standpoint, as well as create safety issues for the children and the residents. And myself, as a daily walker on the road, I walk my dogs, I'm constantly jumping into the ditch to avoid speeding traffic that's already headed to brass fields. So this is already an unsafe situation that we have lived with, with brass fields, who, by the way, is also the major water user, and I believe caused our wells to go dry, but that was a side note. This whole project just really presents unacceptable risks to the community in our valley.
I'm sorry, the allotted three minutes for public comment has expired. If you could please conclude your comment?
Okay. Well, we're concerned with the undesirable elements also. His safety measures and security measures will be for his ranch alone, and they will not provide any sort of security for the owners. We have already had break-ins and home invasions for other, at other times in this valley, and we do not wish to draw that element to our community. So I thank you for your time. We would hope that the needs of the people will come first before the dollar signs that are being presented by this organization, and, you know, please consider the people and the families whose lives you will be disrupting by, you know, providing approval for this use project. Please deny it. Thank you.
May I approach the-
Yes, may I state your name?
My name is Doug Logan, I live at 12270 High Valley Road.
Can you state your name again in the mic, so we can, everyone can hear you?
My name is Douglas Logan, I live at 12270 High Valley Road. My grandparents bought land in Clear Lake Oaks over 100 years ago, I'm almost being forced off of my land. I'd like to read this. "I'm here to voice my concerns about the actions of the planning commission and other county authorities having jurisdiction regarding UP 21-10, a pot farm in High Valley, Clear Lake Oaks. The county's obvious lack of concern about water use in High Valley is more than a little disturbing. The amount of work done without a final permit at the 11650 High Valley Road site demonstrates the lack of care towards the surrounding residents by the project owner as well as the county officials. The amount of airborne dust and dirt that rained down on the neighboring residents during the land preparation is at worst extremely unhealthy, not to mention downright rude. The term 'planning commission' implies that some degree of planning should occur. Due to the carelessness and wasteful use of water on one of the bigger ranches in High Valley, my well has been exhausted, pumping only very muddy water at best. I've had to spend thousands of dollars converting to a water storage tank system. I have to spend well over an additional $1,000 a month, over and above what I've already spent to truck and water. Very difficult for someone collecting a small monthly social security check. To think a professional planner would consider a project that will use substantially more than 2 million gallons a week during the worst drought in 50 years, boggles the mind. The question that begs asking is, who is in charge here? Larry, Moe, or Curly? Has the planning commission considered the effect of additional vehicular traffic near an elementary school on a crumbling two-lane road? And to call that repaved is like putting lipstick on a pig. Does the 30 pieces of silver that the county has already collected from the drug farmers justify the travesty of justice and common sense? Thank you."
Randy Mulder, at 12290 High Valley Road. I've been there about 16 years now, and like my neighbors are saying, enjoying the peace and solitude, calm. And the cultivation of grapes has been wonderful, I got a great view from my front porch, it's beautiful. But the thing about the grapes is, when they get ripe, they don't stink. And in the location, the way the valley's set up, and the predominant winds, that valley is going to be a stink into high heaven. And not to mention, the lack of water, my well is dry also. I mean, I think most all of the private residences around the area are dry, so we're having a water truck in now. So what's going to happen to the rest of the aquifer when we start pumping even more water? Because the, they haven't even been using water yet, it's just been brass filled, and so, anyway. So I'd agree with my neighbors that I oppose this project. Thank you.
Don Van Pelt, 1325 Valley Oak Drive. I sent in a letter yesterday afternoon, I wanted to make sure the planning commission got it. Those are highlights, my points of views, my wife and I, we live directly next door to the project. I'm highly alarmed that the early activation was issued in the first place, I sent a letter back then. And then to allow them to do what they did with careless regards to the neighborhood and everything, I think this project should be denied. And if it's not, I mean, this whole cannabis thing is new to everybody in Lake County. There's going to be odor issues, there's going to be water issues. Since they've issued the early activation, there's not a lot that we can do for this year. But we, as citizens and planning commission, we can learn a lot from this project. Extensively, the odor that it's going to cause, how do we combat that? A whole lot of issues, and I think the commission needs to look at that before they keep adding more and more to it. The reports are very inadequate, there's a lot of different things, if you go from one to the other, of how it's written up and what was presented to all of us. And I think Fish and Game said it all. We give them an early activation, they violated what was there, and, you know, what are we going to do? Just keep allowing it and allowing it? We need to do something. So I'm opposed to the project, and thank you for your time.
Anybody else wish to speak on this item?
Hello, my name is Richard Durham, I'm a Realtor, and a cannabis consultant, and a cannabis cultivator. So Lake County was pushed out of the cannabis world many years ago by the Emerald Triangle, and we never really got our just desserts. This is the best place in Northern California to cultivate cannabis. And without producing a certain amount of poundage, we'll never get the reputation that we justly deserve. A project like this will be stellar, it'll bring attention to the county, and for the other cannabis cultivators, it'll help with our reputation. We don't suffer the coastal fog that causes powdery mildew and the degradation of the cannabis to the west of us, and so, our beginning is just now. And we actually need large producers. Most of the history of Lake County has been backyard gardens, and we have to go past that. I know the project owners, and when they got to Lake County, they, I was involved in the sale of their- was involved in the sale of their, the two other properties that they have. They've been really good stewards of that. I've seen what their grows out there. I know they really care for Lake County. Uh, one of the members was so happy to get a seven oh seven phone number. They're moved into the county and they've, uh, they've been good stewards. So, um, I think that if, uh, if we're gonna move forward with the cannabis industry in Lake County, we're gonna have to embrace some large farms. They're the ones that are gonna actually bring attention and it'll, you know, better all of us. I'm a small farmer and, um, I, I can't afford to brand my brand because I don't produce enough, but these larger projects will and it'll be a benefit to the entire county. So with that, uh, I think that you should, uh, accept this.
Hi, my name is Brian Valentine. I have two concerns I'd like to, um, bring up. One is the gross misuse of the, of the water basin. We're already in a historic drought. Like you heard from multiple people, there are wells that have gone dry in the area and we really don't know what the impact of this, this two million gallons of water is quite a bit. This isn't a food type crop. This isn't anything that's going to benefit anybody unless it's recreational use. Second concern, has North Shore Fire been notified of this, of this project? Has there been any pre-planned sent to them? Do they know the impact that's going to hit the, the fire district? It's a very small district with limited staffing. And if they have been notified, what is the process of getting them notified? So they can make arrangements to be able to handle the impact? And that's what I have. Thank you.
Sir, just in response to your question, there was a letter submitted by the North Shore Fire District, um, just basically explaining what kind of standards the road would have to meet in order to qualify. So they did comment, but not in a pro or con fashion about the actual application.
All right, thank you.
My name is Mallora Valentine. I live at one-two-one-four-five High Valley Road. I've lived there for thirty-four years. I'm opposed to this project. They are being held under an agricultural umbrella. However, they till twenty-four hours a day. They have large trucks that go in the first gate, which is inadequate for the size semi eighteen-wheelers they're bringing in. Last night at one o'clock in the morning, they had an eighteen-wheeler sitting out in front of my house idling for twenty minutes. They till all night long. They have tortured my neighbors with massive clouds of dust. The water usage, they use two water trucks. They fill one right after the other, one right after the other. They're already impacting the water basin. We're in a historic drought. This project should be denied.
My name is Sandra Reed. I've been in my house since nineteen eighty-two. That land's been there that whole time. I've known the previous owners and the ladies that have lived in that little house over there. They wouldn't approve, I can tell you that right now. So that dust, every time they go by, especially the trucks, come right in my house, right in my yard, every single time. You can't go by on that road. It's not paved. That dirt comes in my yard. I'm a country girl. My doors are open. It's been beautiful weather. As long as it's cool enough, my doors are open. My windows are open at night. I don't even have to use my air conditioner. I cool off my house. This type of thing, it's gonna, I mean, I'll move. I'm not gonna live next to that, that field. I can't stay there. That type of stuff makes me sick. Literally sick. I'm not used to going to the doctor that often. I can't do that. This is bad. I have children that come to my house. What happened to the rule where you can't grow in neighborhood? This is our neighborhood. Do you know which way the wind blows in that neighborhood? Yeah, it's like living in a valley or a canyon. It comes past my house, right down the street, every day. It starts every afternoon. Every afternoon, that wind blows our way into the neighborhood. Yeah, that's what it does. You think we're not gonna smell it? Huh, we'll smell it. How much marijuana do we need in Lake County? How much money do you guys need? Yeah, the kickbacks and all this stuff. How much do you need? What's the purpose of all of this?
Morning. My name is Jonathan Walters. I am the general manager at Brassville State Winery and Vineyard. Uh, when Ellie approached us and Tom and crew at Sowers about six, seven months ago, we were very hesitant and on everything. I have spent the last six months probably sitting down with them, talking to them about three days a week, every week, to try to get to know what they're doing, why we should get on board with this and everything. I have to say, these guys are the type of guys we want to be doing this type of operation in Lake County. They will, you know, I, I have to say, I grew up in Texas. This is something I'd never thought I'd know anything about, all right? And it's taken me six months to get on board and I am completely on board and I'm all for this project. I have to say that, um, we've spent a lot of money in water infrastructure. I have helped these guys, uh, push them down the right road to maximize, be very efficient with their water use. They have plants, spent a lot of money on water-saving devices, water probes, electronic solenoid valves that shut off if there's a leak or anything. These guys are gonna be very smart about everything they do over there. Um, in regards to the traffic, um, almost ninety percent of all my employees, both in the vineyard and winery show up before seven AM, before there's any serious traffic on that road. Um, yeah, they leave about three o'clock in the afternoon, uh, but most of the traffic is done early in the morning. Um, and regards to the road, uh, Brassville, we pay ten cents to every case of wine to be able to maintain that road. So that road has been maintained basically by us and the county just started maintaining it this year after about fifteen years of us paying into that to maintain that road. Um, I've been working with the road supervisor over there. Uh, he's not done with the road yet. There's another pass he's planning on doing it. So from the school up, up to the top, they have, uh, chip-silled that and they're gonna come back through and do go from the top of the hill all the way down to our truck entrance. They cleaned the ditches, they cut back the trees. Yes, it's not the best road in the world, but you know, right now that's, that's the best we have. Um, I would love to see that road improved. But, you know, I worked with Scott DeLeon because they did, uh, two years ago, they did, redid the road right in front of the school and make sure that turn was wide enough for semis to get in and out of. So I know that road can easily access trucks coming in and out as that happens. So, um, I tend to lead up trucks. When I know a truck has come, I follow them up and I try to slow down traffic and stop traffic coming up so there's not any issues on that road. So, um, just, uh, just some of your concerns.
My name's Gloria Vega. I don't live on the road they live on, but I, on the agenda, there's a, um, for Wilkinson Road and they want to start a grow there. I live in the area, the wind blows and I can smell everything. And marijuana is one of the things that gives me a headache. I have a migraine headache when, while we walk through town and somebody happens to be smoking in town, I have a headache. I have to go home. My day is shot for two or three days because of the odor. When they have it, when, before, when they had him growing, it was the same thing. The smell was bad. My neighbors, some down the street, grow backyard. I do not go near their home because the odor is so bad. And they just have a few plants. We're talking hundreds of plants and the smell's gonna come right into my area because that's the way the wind blows. And everybody's complaining about the road. We have two entrances to our housing area. One leads to the school, which is a mile away from where this plant, where are they going to put this plant grow? They have one exit, is a one-way bridge. If you get a big rig there, they have a heck of a time getting across that bridge and into that grow. I'm, I'm hearing what these people are saying and we're gonna be doing the same thing. And then we have the crime rate go up. As it is, everybody has security cameras to watch everybody going into their yards, stealing their things. What's gonna happen when we have this grow and the only, I have not seen them put a fence where the creek is, because our creek is dry, people are gonna be running through that creek, going to where that pot is. And safety issue, our school, we're right there where that grow on Wilkinson Road is, is right next to the high school, the middle school and the elementary. And they're just one mile away. I live one mile from the school and that, that plantation's gonna be, that grow is maybe a half a mile from my house. So from a mile and a half to that school, to the elementary school, we're gonna have a grow there. And I don't think it's right. I know everybody has their rights to grow things, but you're invading my grow, my area. The kids come walking through, going home, the buses come through there and we're gonna have all this other traffic going in. And I know what the traffic is. If they block, if by some chance there's an emergency, there's only one, two ways in and out of our area. And if they have a grow and some big trucks, like I've seen them, come through there and they're really making this-
I'm sorry Gloria, your three-minute-a-lotta-time has expired. If you could conclude your comments?
My name is Renee R. Vega and that happened to be my wife, but the main concern right now is your people are talking to you. They need help. Deny it. I mean, uh, like I said, we, we live in Wil- by Wilkinson Drive and that creek's been dry for so many years because there's illegal pumping water from that creek up, up the hill. I've seen it. I've seen people have solo panels just to operate a pump so they can pump water up. So as an American and a veteran, hear your people.
Anthony Contento, Lake County Grow. I understand the roads are an issue, the roads are an issue in the whole county. Um, it's always been a thing. Um, we took two, three, potentially four years to craft this ordinance. The county chose where these designated areas were to cultivate. Within those designated areas, there's literally twenty to thirty percent of usable land that's available for these areas. So I understand roads are a concern, but this was a county's choice to pick these areas to designate compared to agricultural lands and vineyard, vineyard areas. Water is also a huge concern. It is in the whole state. I think we, instead of relying on what people are saying, I think we should rely on what the scientists are saying and we should bring the hydrologists to discuss that more regarding the aquifers. That's all I have to say.
Good morning commissioners. My name is Mary Draper and, um, I'm really here today in support of Sowers HRV. Over the last two years, I've gotten to know Ellie, who's the main guy in charge of it extremely well. And he is actually an extremely good steward of the land. He had, he's not cutting down a tree. The land is flat and it is, got blacktop all over it. There's not dirt roads that they're going on. The dust is from the disking of the land, which they were authorized to do. He also had two water trucks putting water down for the disking to try to keep the dust down. He's very concerned about his neighbors. He had a meeting with all his neighbors prior to the notice of the early activation and also later. He had a neighbor that, um, he found out her well went dry. He sent his guys over there, cleaned all the sledge out of the well, fixed her water pump and made sure she had water. And he still makes sure that she has water. He, uh, actually, it, when you know him, he's extremely invested in this county and his property. Not cutting a tree. He also, um, is very much interested in giving back to the county and he's doing research on that now for an after-school program for the students at the school right down his street. Um, and he's planning on a rather large investment in that. So he's looking at the areas that he can help his community and give back. He sees that as being very important. He wants to be part of the community. He wants to be a help. He's gonna hire a lot of people and you cannot, um, he cannot venture into any other areas that have not already had a cultural report. He, if he was gonna expand his grow, he would have to come back to you and he would have to have the cultural report for that other area. So he can't uncover anything or do anything until that's done. The water, he just drilled a new well on top of the one you have and it's eight hundred gallons a minute. I know when, um, I've had three projects before you and one of mine was approved at three-point-two gallons a minute. And if you do three-point-two times the eighty, that's two-hundred-and-fifty-six gallons a minute. His one well gives eight-hundred gallons a minute. So he's well over the amount of water. I know they were talking about seven-point-four gallons, maybe to go up to as requirement. He still has well over that in his one well alone. This is a great guy. Everything about his project is, um, goes to all the standards. The thing with the, um, I know you were very concerned about the violation-
I'm sorry Mary, your three-minute-a-lotta-time has expired. If you could conclude your comments?
They didn't realize when that happened that there would be a violation. It was a cover crop. So when they disked over the cover crop, that's when they found out that what was there and it was a violation. And they immediately took care of it and mitigated it. I ask for your yes vote for Ellie today.
Hi, my name is Glory Korea. I reside at one-two-two-four-zero High Valley Road. And I'd like to address a couple of issues. One is when they say about the road and that it would not be really adding any more traffic due to the, the traffic that was when PSI had the place, that is wrong. PSI participants traveled in buses. They were there for the whole entire time and they didn't leave the ranch until the class was over the following week. So I do believe this is gonna put a lot more traffic at those possibly sixty extra trips a day by his employees. I was asked to submit this, um, piece of paper here and its signatures of all of the residents that couldn't make it here today that are also oppose this project. Um, the dust has been horrible. I've had to take my son to the ER for his asthma because of it. Um, I'd like to submit two photos to show what it's like up there. The water, as far as the water, I can tell you, I've lived there for over thirty years. And on normal years, I have a big garden. I grow a lot of vegetables. I can them, we survive on them. And in drought years, we've learned, you can't have a big garden, you have to have a few little pots with your plants. You can't fill your swimming pool. You can't water any grass, you can't keep anything green. And my concern is with this project is that drawing more water out when we're in a second drought year, I don't know if we will survive. I don't know that the residents will continue to live out there with no water in their wells. That's all I have to say. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for hosting us today. My name is Randy Jernis. I worked on behalf of SciWorld, who has no employees, for almost 20 years, and SciSeminars also for 18 years. So first, I'd like to address, and I worked as overall consultant for all projects, legal, roads, permits, buildings, finance, water, everything. PSI Seminars, yes, had 50 employees.
Can you please address us?
Please, I'm sorry. I will. We had 50 employees that came and went for 40 years, every day, a regular back and forth up and down the road. We also had between 20 and 30 staff members for every class, which was usually about 100 people. So I don't think that this project impacts the road nearly what SciSeminars did. Secondary, on the archaeological reports that you have current, I'd like for you to note that in, when we were fixing, when SciSeminars was going to build a hotel there back about 22 years ago, Ruzika, did a complete, you know, Ruzika Designs, did a complete survey archaeological, and it was less than 1% of any activity. And I wouldn't imagine that would change since those archaeological sites have not changed at all. So there wasn't a habitation area in that valley. I've met and worked with during the discovery, Ellie and his crew, who are honest, are men of high integrity, want to see the best for the county and for their people as well, that are hard workers, and that will put a lot of money back into our county. They're using all local people to do the work. Equipment, they're using local equipment. They're calling in local water people. Every instance, they look at long term. So I'm in 100% support of the project. I was the one that worked with them to buy the property and represented SciSeminars and SciWorld. And they did, they were the most sustainable organization and potential buyer that we had over a period of seven years of us looking for a buyer. So please, I support this 100%, and I hope you will continue to be supportive. It means a lot to our county for revenue as well.
Good morning, Commissioners. Damian Ramirez, Lake County Grown. Just wanted to speak in, in support of the project. Just touch on a couple of notes. I reviewed the site plans, the property management, supporting docs, the water accessibility, and seems to be quite thorough. I look at them all, and I've had three projects myself in front of you over the years. And it seems like it's about as well put together as any project I've seen. It definitely checks all the boxes from a legal perspective. The site location, you know, a lot of time painstaking hours on your behalf, the board, the community, develop these cannabis exclusion zones. Our industry is cornered in a lot of ways. We feel we're doing the best we can with the areas we have. They chose a site, huge site. Yes, they're doing 80 acres, but your density requirements are such that they're 1 in 20. You've got big buffer zones. This place has previously disturbed areas all over it. The access roads are existing. Multiple wells are existing. The lady that just spoke, multiple traffic has proven to be in and out, and the roads clearly support that. You know, overall, with all of the previous and existing infrastructure, it's relatively a low impact for the, for the degree of what they're, what they're growing there. You know, I, I understand there's always concerns from both sides. And, you know, you have to respect those. And some of them might be more unfounded than others. I know we've had a bad name with the illegal grows over the years. Well, the legal, the legal side of things is a totally different deal. I think the community is starting to understand that. I know you, you Commissioners have understood it over time. And, you know, I encourage you maybe to make it work with everyone to, you know, you've thought outside the box previously, implement some further mitigation measures, perhaps to address some of the more legitimate concerns, concerns from the neighbors. The applicant, from everyone I've spoke to who's dealt with him, I've spoken to both the gentlemen briefly. Everyone speaks well on their behalf. They seem like honest, straightforward people that want to do well by the community, want to do well by our industry. I think you give them the chance. They've shown you with the issues raised by CDFW, I mean, to work on a call with the CDFA, the CDFW, State Water Board. I know what it takes just to get them all together and to, and to, and to get that, them together, to all speak together, to get a game plan. I mean, I think that speaks, speaks volumes on how they're going to
Damian, I'm sorry, your allotted three-minute time has expired. If you can conclude your comments?
Sure, sure. Overall, I, I think the site meets the requirements. Have fought a lot of painstaking. Time is put into this ordinance. They meet the requirements. They should have the legal right to do their legal, well-thought-out, well-invested operation. Thank you for your time.
Sarah Rosales from Sowers. Want to start by, before I started working with Sowers, I just knew the gentlemen. And when they kind of showed me the project, I was like, you guys are in and out of your head. But as we stand here, we see what they're doing, and I see that they're doing everything with a good conscience and ethically, not only for themselves, for the community, and everyone employed by them. At Sowers, we pride ourselves on building strong relationships and uplifting our community. Everything we do, we do consciously and ethically with the intention of being sustainable. I can say that we've done everything possible to be as transparent as possible and do right by our neighbors. I can only speak on our character and who we are as a company. I can say with confidence that if there's anyone you want tackling a project like this in Lake County, it's Sowers and HVR. We are doing everything possible to mitigate any inconvenience. And like anything we know, the construction is going to be temporary and only seasonal. At the end of the day, I think it's just going to be, we have to work as a community. Projects like this are going to be more familiar. And again, if there's anyone you want doing this, it's definitely the guys. They are working with everyone. You can go up to the farm, talk to anybody. I've met some environmentalists. I've met some agriculturalists that are out there. And we're doing everything possible to just make this as transparent with less impact on our environment and our community as well. With the school being so close, I was a teacher previously, so I know what it's like having kids and being around them. And I can say that it's more than half a mile away from the school. It's at least like two miles, three miles of that. So I don't think it's going to be too much of an issue. I know we're working on ways for transportation for employees to not, to come in and out after operating hours, not really between the hours of 8:00 and 5:00 p.m. Once, most of our employees are on the farm, they stay on the farm for anywhere for 10 to 15 hours. So I don't think it's going to be all that of traffic, but I know we're conscious of the road when we're driving up there. So just wanted to speak on our behalf. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Elia Goel. I'm one of the owners of this project. I wish my partner Avi was here with me today, but unfortunately couldn't make it. We stumbled upon this property about a year ago, and we fell in love with it immediately. We're already here for almost two years in the Red Hills, helping in a cannabis operation there, and eventually bought it. Richard showed us the property about a year ago, and it was just unbelievable, perfect for cannabis from this site, a project. Before we even bought the place, we went into six-month escrow, very heavy due diligence before we even bought it to make sure that this project is even viable in this land. We met with Steve, the AGA, the AGA Department Manager or Commissioner, met with several Board of Supervisors. We invited you, I even, I invited you, Mr. Batson, to, to come and see the project for yourself and have me explain a little bit more in details about it. I'm sure you guys are busy, you didn't have time. Like, like I said, we invited our neighbors to sit and talk with them, to see all their concerns, which I, I feel now that we didn't, we didn't really scratch the surface with them because I didn't expect so much resistance from, from that. And I'm personally apologize for the dust, but really from what we have been done, waiting patiently for this size of project to be approved to us to start doing the groundwork. It's not that it's an excuse, but it left us with a very short time period to actually build and bring it up together and not disappoint 200 families from these companies. This is not going to happen next year for the dust. I want to say, the earlier that you start working the land, the less dust you have, the less dry the, the actually land is. I want to say that we are a part of this community, and we're going to continue to be a part of this community, and we're going to give back like we already do. Things below surface, we don't have to, to, to say all the, all that, but we are a part of this community. And that's it. If, if you guys have any, any questions, you have my number. You can always call me. I'm talking to several of you guys daily. So this is, this is just us. I wish everyone good luck, and hopefully this will be resolved, and this hard time for my neighbors will, will stop soon. Thank you.
Quick question for you. Are you, sir, are you saying that the disking, which is so disturbing, is largely done?
Correct. So today, God willing, we're supposed to finish all the dirt work and beds. And another thing for the concern of the water, those beds, I know that they don't look nice to you. But as soon as the plant's going to, going to come up, it's going to look exactly like a vineyard. They are there to protect from evaporation of water. So this is, is a big conservation of water as a result of, of studies that we have done. We're using tenciameters, tools, technological tools to help us conserve water as well. I don't know what else we could have done to, to verify that this is actually viable. To me, the resistance is very, is very hard. I, I don't like to live in a place that my neighbors don't like my existence over there. And, and I understand that. I can understand that. But I wish I could sit with you guys and solve it somehow. I think I've done several things with you guys that we're not going to mention, but we are a part of this community. That's it. Any other questions? Thank you.
Do we have anybody else wishing to comment on this project? Or in the Zoom room?
Yes, I do have two hands raised in the Zoom room. Are we ready to take those ones?
Yes.
All right. The first hand I have up here in the Zoom room is from Danielle. Danielle, that allowed you to speak and asked you to unmute. All right, looks like you're
Hello.
I'm sorry, will you please
Yes, I'm Danielle Backey. And I'm using my fiance's account due to the wish to remain anonymous for lack of perhaps repercussions. But our big concern, I'm a operator in Lake County as well. We turned in our application over a year and a half ago, and it was an absolute battle for us to get our early activation this year. And I know there's a lot of other cultivators in the county that operated last year that did not have a planer for months or whatever the situation may have been. And here we are with a giant company that didn't operate last year, seeming to have somehow skipped the line in front of all of us other smaller cultivators is beyond frustrating and absolutely baffling to us. How is this giant multimillion-dollar company in front of the line, in front of all of us other people? We've done everything that we've needed to do to operate and get our license.
Speaker.
So I'd just like to bring up that point. I'm all for people having, you know, the right to grow their businesses, small or large. But I just think it needs to be addressed how some of the smaller farms have been skipped over in line
Excuse me, speaker?
that have been patiently waiting to get MUPs. And that's all I have. Thank you all for your time.
Okay. For going forward, comments are to be directed towards this particular project. Public comments on general issues related to commission business were, were during, were to be made during the public comment period at the beginning of the, of the meeting. Thank you.
Next tangent.
Okay, the next hand I have up is from, this is Angie Dodd.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Angie Dodd, and I appreciate the opportunity to comment on this project. I want to preface my comments with the fact that I'm not against this project or cannabis cultivation in general. However, this project appears to have been rushed through the system and has not provided the level of rigorous analysis that all other cannabis projects have been held to. I'm a water resources and environmental engineering consultant with over 25 years of technical expertise in these areas and have been working on multiple projects in Lake County and many other counties. I would like to bring up a few items of concern. It was stated that there is no history of incidents on High Valley Road and that there will be only 60 daily trips. Similar outdoor cultivation projects employ seasonal employees at about one to two people per acre, which would be 85 to 170 seasonal employees for the 80 acres of cultivation and five acres of nursery. That does not account for processing and other activities on site. So the count seems very, very low to me. I'm not convinced by the number of trips presented in the initial study and due to the size of the project and rural nature of High Valley Road, a traffic impact study by a professional is recommended to accurately evaluate the impacts of this project on High Valley Road and appropriate mitigation measures as necessary. In addition, the water study and drawdown model do not provide enough analysis to demonstrate a no-impact determination associated with the project and on existing wells in the High Valley Basin or discussed impacts during a drought and does not address cumulative impacts on the basin. 354 acre feet represents 40% of the usable storage, but the usable storage is not the total water available during a drought. This was not discussed or accounted for. The water analysis looks pretty technical, but it's not sufficient. It was also mentioned that 60 to 70% of the irrigation water would infiltrate and recharge the aquifer. I'm very skeptical of this estimate. Cultivators using drip light irrigation, which is what Sowers says they will use, do so to avoid water runoff and waste. 60 to 70% of runoff seems extremely high, very wasteful, and unlikely, especially with the water savings measures mentioned by a few speakers. The biological study prepared for this site didn't conduct spring or summer floristic surveys, which has been a standard requirement by CDF for all applicants. The national wetland inventory shows a wetland in the southeast corner, and aerial imagery indicates minor class three drainages that were not mapped and setbacks not provided. In my opinion, the biological resources were not addressed rigorously enough to ensure that they were all mapped and avoided. Also, I have a question regarding AB52 and tribal consultation. Was this done correctly? There was not enough information provided in the initial study regarding this. In addition, were staff trained regarding discovery of archaeological and tribal resources? I'm also surprised that an early activation was issued when a neighbor submitted a letter against it. Somehow, this project was able to jump the line and get through the system without the same level of rigorous analysis that other applicants have been subject to, especially when there are several or many applications for cultivation less than a tenth of the size that have been in the system for a long time and have not received early activation or have been deplanned and commissioned. Also, other early activations have been revoked or work stopped for illegal grading, and now there's a DFW violation for setback violations? Has a stop work order been considered for this project until the violations have been resolved? My recommendation is that this project be postponed for a later hearing while the necessary studies are completed to accurately evaluate and determine the impacts of this project as all other cannabis applicants are being asked to do. Thank you.
Do we have any other handshake? Do we have any other handshake?
Uh, yes, at this time, we have one more hand raised in the Zoom room. Uh, I still have one phone caller. Uh, you can raise your hand via Zoom, uh, by dialing star nine. Um, I, um, the next hand I have up is from Jennifer Smith. I have given you permission to speak. It looks like you're unmuted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
This is Jennifer Smith.
Great, thank you.
Um. I'm a little stunned that um, a consultant for several other large projects that are in direct competition with this project was allowed such latitude during, uh, that last speaker's presentation. So pardon me as I'm, uh, suddenly kerfuffled. Um, I can appreciate the concerns raised today. I hope that I can also shed some light on a project of this size. Dust and construction is going to come with any project of this size. When it happened, uh, the applicant was notified and they addressed the situation right away. This is a one-time build out. When it's done correctly, this won't have to be done again. And while it's painful to, to go through this as a neighbor, it's no different than a vineyard going in, an orchard going in, or a grocery store going in. And I hope that the community can see that, um, it's not an ongoing matter. And that also addresses the traffic that comes with a build out of any project in, in the county. Whether it be agricultural based or not. Um, there is going to be traffic during build out that is not normal traffic. There are big trucks, there's soil trucks, there are tractors. Once it's built, all of that goes away and you're basically left with just passenger cars. Uh, there will be seasonal traffic, of course, but it's not any different than the traffic that, um, is experienced by grape vineyards or pear orchards throughout the county. There are two entrances to the area. Um, so the comment that there's just one entrance seems misleading to me. Um, regarding this applicant himself, uh, the company has been very involved in the community. They have had great outreach to their neighbors. They, um, continue to have open dialogue. Any concerns that have been addressed, whether it be by the neighbors, CDFW have been, um, addressed and mitigated in an expedient manner. And I think that this is the type of project we want in the county. Uh, we want people that are good actors, that are going to be involved in the community and want to be team players. Um, and I hope that you will consider this and approve this project. Thank you.
Do we have anybody else in the Zoom room, Jake?
Uh, at this moment, that was the last hand I have raised in the Zoom room.
Okay, do we have anybody else wishing to comment?
One just popped up. Uh, the hand I have raised is from Hyperlight111. All right, I've given you permission to speak and asked you to unmute, Hyperlight. Uh, one more time, Hyperlight, I've asked you to unmute. Uh, I did have another hand come up. Um, I'm going to move on. Well, it looks like Hyperlight might be having issues. Uh, the next hand I have up is from JD. Uh, JD, I've allowed you to speak and asked you to unmute.
Uh, thank you, I have unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please confirm your first and last name.
Yes, my name is Jonathan Dharma Pollen. Uh, we are farmers in, in High Valley, onto the south of this project. And have been following this project for the past, uh, several months. Uh, thank you for everybody's efforts to, uh, go through the planning process that y'all have been through. I just want to comment that, uh, as farmers in High Valley for the past 20 years, uh, 22 years, actually. We are very supportive of this project and we are particularly supportive. Uh, because we believe that this project will be conducted in accordance with, uh, the, uh, cultivation requirements of the county and the state. Um, we want to see legitimate cultivation of cannabis and frankly legitimate cultivation of any form of agriculture in, uh, Lake County. And we believe that that would be the case here. Uh, we certainly express our support for the project itself and for the project to meet any necessary mitigation requirements that the county sets. Uh, netting that to our support for this project. And we like to see this project be successful. Uh, and hopefully, uh, then the necessary mitigation that the neighbors are asking for, uh, is also successfully met. And we believe that Elliot and his team will go out of their way to make sure that it happens. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else wishing to comment in the room, this project? You have to come up and state your name.
Can I do that again? Again, I'm Doug Lobin, 1227 High Valley Road. My concerns at this point, among others, are the water that apparently or supposedly replenishes the aquifer. Can anybody tell me how much nitrogen and other toxic materials are going to go into the aquifer as a result of irrigating any type of an agricultural product? Thank you.
You have to come up to the mic, please.
I want to comment on this that.
State your name again.
Elliot Guel. Um, we, my partner Avi's been in, um, uh, agriculture all his life, his family, and specifically organic lemons and cut flowers. Um, this property will be fully organic. Nothing that is not Omer certified will be sprayed. So chemicals and such like, things like that, they will leach, leach to into the aquifer, which will not, um, shouldn't, uh, be an issue. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna close public comment?
I'm Sandra Reed and I have a question for you guys. How many of you would like this going on in your backyard? Because this is an extension of my backyard. Could you live with that? You want all this going on in your backyard? Think about that.
Okay, we will. State your name again, please.
Maria Khan, 12250 High Valley Road. I, I first wanted to say again, I, I have nothing against Ellie. Uh, they seem like very nice people. It's the project and the impacts that it's going to have to our community. Um, the, the traffic alone is a concern. These are going to be impaired drivers that come off of that grow every day.
Do you have new information you'd like to offer in your second round of comments or simply repeat what you said before?
Well, I didn't mention the impaired drivers, that was something. But I also actually would like to know their mitigation plans for, um, wildlife that's going to come after their plants and, and tubings for water. I understand, I've done a lot of research about illegal grows and how people up there in the national forests have put out cans of cat food with poison or, you know, put poison along the lines because the animals coming after the water. So I have a real affinity with animals, I care about them. I want to know how they're going to mitigate the, the, um, the wildlife from attacking their plants and their hosing, um, in their project. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to close public comment, bringing it back to the commission for questions and comments.
Uh, Mr. Chair, we still have more hands raised in the Zoom room.
Okay, we'll reopen for, how many hands do we have?
Uh, at this moment, we have three hands and the, the, the individual who had issues before is back.
Okay.
Uh, okay, so, uh, Hyperlight, I'm going to check him back in here with you. Uh, I've given you permission to speak. And have asked you to unmute. All right, it appears that individual might still be having issues. Uh, I'm gonna leave that pending there, see if they come up. I do have another new hand from Aaron. Uh, Aaron, I have allowed you to speak. It looks like you're muted. Will you please state your first and last name?
Hi, this is Erin McCarrick, in Clear Lake. Um, I understand the frustration with the, um, processing of timelines for applicants. And just a side note, I hope that that does get worked out with CDD. In this, um, proposal and this applicant, it is, I think it speaks well of the applicant that they are reaching out to neighbors and that they're bridging a lot of the gaps that are out there in terms of, um, working with wine growers and other farmers in the area. And so, we're embarking on this new industry, you know, that was approved in 2017, the ordinance, and has been evolving since then. And it is going to bring change. Um, but if there are people who, companies, applicants, who are working with their neighbors and working with the community, then those applicants should be encouraged. And, um, hopefully there is more communication with the neighbors as this project and the industry itself evolves.
All right, next hand, Jake.
All right, the next hand we have up was from Jennifer Smith.
Hey Jake, are there any people in the Zoom room that have not yet spoken?
Uh, no, and that individual lowered their hand too, so I do not have any more hands raised.
Okay, we're going to close public comment, uh, bringing it back to the commission. Any questions, follow-up or comments?
Um, so with the size of this operation in mind, uh, obviously my main concern is, uh, as long as other neighbors is, uh, the road access to the, to the, uh, to the grow site. At such large operation, uh, you will be, um, having a lot of deliveries going as well. Large deliveries, uh, potentially heavy equipment during construction. And a lot of traveling on this road. Uh, my question is, how or what will be done in the case of an emergency? If, um, evacuations were to be made? And how concerning it is it, how concerning it is to, uh, emergency agencies having to evacuate, uh, the neighborhood? So I mean, I don't think there's anybody here that can answer or respond from an emergency agency like a, uh, fire department. But, um, that's just my main concern, uh, due to the fact that there is, is the only road leading there and the only road to get out as well. Um, we are in fire season as well and the drought doesn't help. I'm sure they have, uh, potential, uh, uses, uh, of water to be able to, um, to help out. But if you have people evacuating and then you're having, uh, emergency vehicles traveling up the road, that's where my concern is for the safety of, uh, everybody that lives up on that road. So, thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
I, um, it's been an interesting hearing and, uh, we've listened carefully. And, uh, I am not prepared to oppose this project today. But I am concerned about some of the issues raised by the public. And I would take up the gentleman from Lake County Grown in terms of a more intense or careful hydrology analysis. And, uh, I would like to suggest before we move forward with approval or not, that we consider such a hydrology presentation. And I've changed my mind about the traffic study. I don't think that, that there has to be a catch 22 and that you can't study something that isn't in place yet. I would think you can, with computer modeling and all the rest, you can do a pretty darn good job of understanding better the traffic implications. So I would be interested in that kind of a breakdown and analysis before moving forward. Thank you.
Um, I will, I, I echo that. I think a hydrology report would be fantastic. And if the applicant can verify, um, did you guys have your bio in the late season and in the spring? Or was there only one done?
Um, no, the bio study was done and then there are mitigation measures in, sorry. The bio study was done and there are mitigation measures in place, um, for, uh, surveys during, uh, nesting season and whatnot for bats.
Okay.
And birds.
So, so my concern is, is the overall cumulative impact. And with traffic, water, um, cultural resource issues that I, I see happening, um, the biological resource issues. I think there are a number, number of concerns that I have. Um, and looking at the reports and, and kind of seeing from applicant to applicant, the same group doing the same biological study with not much change other than APNs and, um, owners, landowners. And so I've always had concern of the biological resource studies being adequate and efficient and determining, uh, sensitive species. Um, again, with the, the cultural resources. I, I know with the new tribal cultural resources added to the initial study, that the tribe did not participate or was not able to be contacted. Um, but even though the historic use of the land has been agriculture, there still may be resources within that land that's been disced. And, and looking at the study, none of those lands, to my knowledge, were, um, surveyed. Just the area that was, um, outside of it, the disking area. And so I, I still have concerns with that, that protection. And, and the more and more we're talking, listening to the community, I think the applicant needs to be sensitive to the concerns, but also that no mishaps happen. And, and again, this, uh, whether this is resolved and whether CDFA or, um, fishing wildlife oppose or they don't, they have, don't have a position, this to me is, uh, a big indicator to, it potentially happen again. And so I haven't been assured of that not happening. And so that's what I'm listening to, um, with the comments from the supporters, the applicant. From the consultant, I'm not 100% sure that another bump is not going to be encountered. Um, so those are, that's kind of where I'm at. You know, I don't, um, as I look at the documents, some of my concerns weren't addressed and at this time, I'm not prepared to support this project.
I would then be prepared to move that we continue this issue until the requested studies have been provided and we can do a bit of a deeper dive. Because I, I do think the project has some merit. I understand the objections and I'm, and I certainly appreciate your comments. You are a real leader on the cultural resource issues, Mr. Chair. But I am not, I'm, I'm not prepared to oppose this today. So I don't know how the rest of the vote would break down, but perhaps, um, my colleagues would continue, consider continuing.
I'm, I'm open to, uh, continuing this item. A hydrology report would be nice. I would like to see some type of clarification and verification that the, uh, violations have been addressed and mitigated from the, our green sheet.
I, I too will agree. Um, I would, I would support a continuation. Um, again, we've looked at the, the water usage for the project and for the applicant. But if we have, um, community members and neighbors saying their wells are impacted, how is that? How is that impact being considered in the overall cumulative impact to water use? So that's a concern and I, I would also like to have a presentation on the hydraulics as well.
I, I agree with like the, the recharge of the aquifer, the, the long-term impact on the surrounding area. I would like to see some more information on that. Go ahead.
I agree, uh, in continuing this item as well. Uh, until we do have more information, um, I mean, the project itself, um, seems like it's very well thought out. Where it is, within the location where it's at. But like I said, access is one of my concerns. And, um, I mean, I do hope that, uh, or I do see that the applicants are willing to, to reach out to the neighbors and other agencies to make sure that this project is done well because it's not a small investment. It's, uh, something that needs to be done right. And in order for me to make a decision, I do need it, uh, a bit more information with the hydrology reports as well. So that's, that's where I'm at as well.
Do we need um a date uncertain on this? Or does the applicant feel that they can have a set date for a hydrology report? You can approach the podium, please, just so we can all hear you. Sorry.
Ma'am, there is a hydrology report um that was prepared for the project. Um, our hydrologists are um in the Zoom meeting. Um, just need to know what specific level of detail um the commission is uh looking for in terms of um i- i- if that existing hydrology report is adequate, if you need additional detail, or uh or what you wanna see in that.
Well, there was one comment from um one of the people in the Zoom room that perhaps this application didn't undergo as rigorous an analysis of water as others. I'm not judging that. But in, before this hearing began, I did hear some grumbling about that kind of thing in terms of what other applicants have had to, had to provide or revise. And I don't know, Catherine, if this is, there was a reason that...
Yeah, so there was a water analysis that was performed as part of the project. I mentioned it in the PowerPoint, um taking some highlights from the memo that went along with it. Um, but there is a water analysis for this project.
I, I think I read it and there were about 30 pages of numerals and tables, which for me wasn't very illuminating. I, I don't know how to, and you know, I'm not a hydrologist and that was data that I found impenetrable.
Okay, ma'am.
Yeah?
The, the water analysis is not the one that was included with the property management plan. It is a separate full document.
Well, then I would need time to look at that before we proceeded today.
Yeah, I believe that was also included in the submitted materials, the hydrology, the full hydrology report.
What was the uh?
Does it have an attachment number?
So to, to clarify what he's saying, there were several documents that were submitted with this project. Um, it was not part of the property management plan.
So then it wasn't provided in the staff report?
Correct, you, you weren't able to see it.
Thank you.
Yep.
It was an amendment to the...
Is there an example-type report or something that you know of that uh would reflect all the information you guys wanna see?
Part of this is a question of drought and um all applications, especially large applications, are just undergoing a level of more scrutiny than in the past. And uh we've, we've expressed a concern as a commission that we would like more guidance from the Board of Supervisors as well about water issues and, and how to, how to judge them. And so, no, there's not some perfect report, you know, out there that we could point you to. But um if the hydrologists are in the Zoom room and have heard the kinds of comments made today by the public, perhaps that could inform additional detail. But if this report that we have not yet been able to see is illuminating, that would be useful too.
Okay, I mean, we can put them in the Zoom room and they can potentially clarify.
I'm not prepared to, I don't know what the, that report says, so I don't know what I would ask them to clarify at this point. I'm not trying to hold up your project.
No, no, no.
Um, I believe my main concern is the recharge of the aquifer, the impact that it has on the surrounding neighbors, the recharge rate as far as what you're gonna be watering, what's actually going to be put back in the ground and all of that. Those are the type of details that I'm mainly concerned about. We're aware of the, of the multiple wells, the one that you're only going to be using, re-drilling the one by the nursery, like all of that to me makes sense. What my main concern is, is the ripple effect and what, what we could do to get a little bit more information and let the public feel a little bit more comfortable about what's going on above them. That's all.
That's helpful, thank you.
Ellie here, um we probably will be able to supply something within two weeks if sufficient with you.
Okay.
The other question, we either continue this to a date certain, which gives you enough time to provide the information we've requested, or we leave it open to a, a date in the future.
I would love to put a date on it.
A date certain, okay.
So two weeks, uh hopefully we'll be able to get it done.
Commissioners, your next, your next general meeting is on the 22nd of this month, which will be two weeks from today.
That would be July 22nd?
It is what it is.
I'm, I'm not sure you'd do very well if we voted on the actual motion to approve today. And uh because it would, I'm not prepared to oppose this, but I don't think I'm prepared to support it yet without the additional information I've asked for.
And I, and I understand it and it's obviously hard to, to approach um this larger project when there is so, so much opposing from, from the neighbors. You, you need to hear that. So I respect that. I will take those two weeks. I'll get as much as information for you guys uh as I can. And uh hopefully we'll be able to satisfy you in two weeks.
Thanks, I believe you.
Thank you.
And if your consultant can be available as well, maybe to go over some of the details of that report, that would be helpful.
Sure.
July 22nd, yeah. Um, just a quick question for staff. I'm looking at the report, I'm on page 13, where it has the, the layout of the, basically of the project and it has the waterways identified with the 100-foot setbacks. Was this map done before the grading of the tributaries and the waterways, or was this done prior to? I just kinda wanna make sure how they're scaling this map. Was this map done after all of the illegal grading and all of those violations? Or was it done prior to?
It was done prior to. There was a previous um LSA approved by CDFW.
Okay.
And then um after, subsequent to the uh grading, they came back out, re-looked at it and questioned that. And uh then the applicant is working with them to uh remediate that as of now.
So what I'm looking at right now doesn't reflect what is actually up at the project site?
In term, I'm sorry.
As far as the grading goes and with the way that this is laid out with the setbacks and where that the tributaries are on this map, has that altered in any way since the grading?
Um, there's slightly more grading than is, or clearing than is shown on the, on the map.
Thank you.
Okay, we wanna make a motion to continue or? Sure, I know the staff report, consider it District One, but it isn't.
If you could, just 'cause it's stated, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Planning Commission continue the consideration of UP 21-10 until our July 22nd hearing, so that we may um receive and review additional information.
A second?
On the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May I ask for a quick five-minute break, please?
Yes, we can take a 10-minute break if everybody likes. Turn back at 11:20. Okay, we're gonna call the meeting back to order. Uh, we're gonna take up our 9:10 a.m. item. Public hearing to consider approving use permit UP 19-41. Applicant owner, Voight Holdings LLC, location 425 and 500 Voight Road, Lakeport, California, a property consisting of 40-plus acres. APN 008-043-02 and 008-032-65.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Eric Porter, Associate Planner with Lake County. Uh, the next two items that I have, including Voight Road Holdings LLC, I don't have a PowerPoint. Oh, thanks, John. The next two items have had significant public uh comments that range from the gamut for water. The next one, there were concerns, concerns about traffic, but there were no concerns raised, to my knowledge, about Voight Road traffic that would be impacted. Uh, project's on a 40-acre parcel. There was some confusion about the APNs. I don't think our database has caught up to the lot line adjustment that occurred on this property. So the current property size is 40 acres after the adjustment. I don't know if they've reassigned APN numbers. The APN numbers that I've used were what we had on hand uh that matched according to our GIS database when I wrote the reports. So the maps uh were provided on April 25th of this year. Those do reflect the adjusted lot lines. The project itself is morphed. They applied in 2019 prior to the mapping of uh protected farmland. They had actually originally applied for, I believe it's a mixed-use, part, partially greenhouse, partially outdoors. The mapping occurred last year. Once the property was mapped, those applicants that were complete as of December 15th of 2020 were allowed to um have a two-year transitional period. This application was not complete as of that date. They resubmitted on um, I believe it was April 25th of 2021. We prepared the SEQA documents based on uh the revision. There was a, a typo in the initial study that's not germane to the project. The project uh description, maps, et cetera, within the initial study are correct. It does have one reference to outdoor cultivation and it was a cut-and-paste error that remained in the um SEQA documents. However, the project description itself was exactly what is before you today. So we're confident the SEQA material is legitimate and valid. So three-phase project and you can see what uh, on page one of 13, uh what each phase consists of. Each phase has at least one greenhouse. Phase two actually has two greenhouses. And then they're proposing two 50-by-75-foot drying buildings. Again, it is in a map, a high-value farmland area, farmland protection area. And it's about a half mile from the uh Lampsen Field airstrip. Uh, it's in the airport overlay zone. That has some effect on building heights, although they're far enough away that the projected height of the greenhouses wouldn't be affected by the uh airport overlay zone. They have a fairly productive well. I did not put a water analysis in the staff report like I normally do. So I went back through the uh water consumption uh and the uh well rating. And there was a test done on February 17th of 2021 for the primary well. And it showed a consistent 100 gallons per minute over a six-hour timeframe. Uh, the drawdown was not significant and the recharge rate was extremely rapid. So the water table in this location is fairly stout. What the applicant's proposing are two A-type 3B uh greenhouse licenses. Uh, ultimately it would consist of 124,000 square feet of cultivation area with an estimated canopy of 44,000 square feet. So the cultivation area is quite a bit larger than the actual canopy area. Cultivation is allowed in the ag zone. It's allowed in protected farmland mapped zones, but it has to be inside of a greenhouse. And they have to immediately uh cultivate inside of greenhouses. They're not allowed to do any outdoor cultivation. So as is the case with any uh major use permit, six findings have to be met, actually nine, including a subsection 27 AT, but the six out of chapter, uh article 51, section 51.4, we had to make a finding that the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the use uh will not be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort, general welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood. We had to make a finding that the site for the project is adequate in size, shape, location, physical characteristics to accommodate the type of use and the level of development. We were able to make that finding. Number three, that the streets, highways, and pedestrian facilities are reasonable, uh reasonably adequate to safely accommodate the proposed use. Uh, Voight Road actually goes into the project, uh the project site. And it's a flat, well-maintained, uh gravelled road. Part of it is uh less than 20 feet wide. And because they have structures, they have to meet PRC 4290 and 4291 CAL FIRE roads standards. So that'll be a requirement before they're allowed to put any buildings up. Number four, that there is adequate public or private services, including but not limited to uh fire, water, sewage disposal, and police protection. We were able to make that finding. Number five, that the project is in conformance with the applicable provisions of uh this code, the general plan, and uh the Lakeport area plan, I believe is the governing document for area plans. Uh, we were able to make that finding. Number six, that there are no violations of the site. We confirm that there are no violations of chapters 5, 17, 21, 23, or 26 of the Lake County Code. We have to make findings uh that meet Article 27, Subsection AT, that the use, uh proposed use complies with all development standards, that the applicant is qualified to make the application described in section, et cetera, et cetera, and that the application complies with qualifications for a permit described in section 1.ii subi. SEQA, we did put, we did write uh a mitigated negative declaration that was sent to the State Clearing House earlier this year. And there are several mitigation measures that we felt were appropriate. Aesthetics are a big one for greenhouses, so we have uh three mitigation measures that are specific to the visual appearance of the buildings and how to best screen them. Uh, those are found on page seven of your staff report. We found that uh we needed mitigation measures for air quality because there would be some site disturbance. We have the standard cultural findings that we added as mitigation measures. And getting to the cultural study, there were, I believe, two insignificant artifacts that were found on the site during the cultural evaluation. The conclusion by the uh the people doing the survey, which is a firm that I hadn't encountered before, it's called Alta uh Archaeological Services, I believe. Anyway, they, they concluded that uh there would not be a significant impact to cultural uh resources. However, as a matter of practice, we put in um CUL-1 and CUL-2 as standard mitigation measures. I did not see any tribal correspondence regarding this project, which is kind of unusual because Kelseyville and Lakeport uh tend to be rich in tribal uh history, so I was a little bit surprised about that. Um, and then finally, we felt that noise during and after construction could be a potential problem, although the property is large enough to where um much of the noise would be dissipated. We still put maximum noise thresholds within the mitigation measures that are proposed and shown on page nine of the staff report. So given the um review, given the materials that we've reviewed, we found that um that it met the criteria for the adoption of uh initial study IS 19-60. And we're recommending approval of major use permit UP 19-41. And so that concludes my presentation, unless you have any questions for me.
I don't have any questions. Is anybody else?
No questions.
Okay, we're gonna open this up to public comment. Anybody wishing to speak, please come up and state your name.
My name is Peggy Todd and I live um 610 Voight Road. I'm representing myself, Peggy, and my husband Gerald Todd. We are neighboring property owners to the property proposal before you today. We reside at 610 Voight. Our concerns are primarily regarding confusing and outdated water data. Most of our remarks and requests for comment or clarification are in regards to the consultant's report prepared for the applicants from Hervitz Environmental dated March 30th, 2021. In the cover letter, paragraph two, I quote, "The quantity of groundwater to be used for the project is unlikely to result in significant declines in regional groundwater availability or depletion of groundwater resources over time." On page four is data from Department of Water Resources that tells us that groundwater storage in Big Valley has a decline by 45,000 acre-feet from 1960 to 2004, but there doesn't seem to be any more current data. And as well, the report also says on page four, quote- And as well, the report also says on page four, quote, "Much of the land in these areas is still undeveloped," which would lead one to believe that there could be significant increase in agricultural development in the near future. It seems that more updated water data is essential to judge the project realistically. Today and indeed over the last couple of years here in Lake County, every project's water use probably gets questioned, and it can be concerning when the consultant doesn't even use local water data. On page five, it states, "Since specific water usage rates were not available from the applicant, we relied on water use guidelines provided by Sonoma County. Can I ask why the applicant did not submit accurate Lake County water data to the consultant?" On page six, the report is speaking of, quote, "An additional five acres." I'm going to leave this out in case I don't have time to finish. I'm going to come back to that. So below that, page six states that project will require two full-time farm managers, and data even projects, quote, "An average of five full-time employees throughout the growing season." Table one shows that mixed light cultivation, growing, and using water will be 12 months a year. So why does the table on page seven show five months of no employee water use? When it says on page six that potable water for farm workers will come from project well, then they make calculations using Napa County data. And in a paragraph above, admit that, quote, "Lake County has warmer and drier conditions than most of Sonoma County, so water use should be greater here." On page eight, it can't be ignored that the six, quote, "Six-hour well yield test" was done in February of that year, in the winter, when to be expected that would be the best for water availability, when the chart on page seven shows the most water use for this proposal will be in September, which is the end of summer. This seems like data was collected to reflect the best water situation without representing the months that the most water will be used, May through October.
Hi Peggy, unfortunately, we've hit that three-minute allotted timeframe. If we can go ahead and conclude our comments.
Okay, I just want to let you know too that they're using 2006 Department of Water data, and remember that based on the well yield test that's been done in February, none of this takes into account the drought conditions. And in conclusion, you can read the rest of it. This is my public comment, and I'd like it to be read by you completely. There is data in the consultant's report that seems outdated, tables that seem confusing and incorrect, and calculations made using data from other counties, and reports, critical tests that seem to be done at questionable times. Thank you.
I'll just have a copy of my seminal here on this, for the, my rebuttal on this for the opposed.
Okay.
My name is James Adams. I live at 455 Voight Road. I am opposed to this project basically as a property owner in the area. The property is zoned, is agricultural area. That's what I bought it, when I bought the property to be used as and as for my animals. Has been no communication or guarantee of the impact of the residences in the area regards to the environmental scenic and/or traffic study with a commercial industry being approved and constructed. Moreover, I'm opposed to the water mitigation plan that has been imposed for the commercial operation. The previous owners of the property were drilling water for every summer for the previous five years, drilling deeper as there is not enough water for the vineyards in their care, as told to me firsthand by the vineyard manager, and he was told me not enough agua for the grappa. So it's hard to read this one. The water available study that was conducted on February 2021, as Peggy was talked, was performed at the height of the water season. The results were gained at the water table tradition's highest. The same year as May 1st, is this well on my property was pushing out sediment. I check my well every month at the beginning of the month. I've now I've had to start changing my sediment filters because I am drawing sand every month in my filters for my well. So as of day before yesterday, I called Kyle Tech. I'm going to have my well tested for depth and water quality and the depth of the well itself to see how much sediment I have. As part of this, according to the common resources and research, proposed amounts of water needed to sustain a cannabis operation in that size would be just estimated at 3,500 gallons per day, creating minimum a large strain to the water table in the area that's directly affecting the personal wells used by the homeowners in the surrounding area. My personal residence is not agricultural, and we rely on the well water for all of our water needs as private residents in the home and caring for our small ranch of animals, which is similar to the neighboring properties at 485 that has horses and cattle on it also, and they only survive off the two wells that they have. One only produces less than one foot or one foot an hour of water. The proposed project allowed to begin an operation, the start of this year, has begun in a drought year, and the impact cannot be guaranteed from the water in the local aquifers. I suggest that the wells be retested and results compared to July, August in regards to their capacity from the first test performed. I am conducting and testing the integrity of my own access to water of my own personal cost. Part of that testing-
Sorry, James, we are out of the allotted three minutes. If you could go ahead and conclude your comments.
Part of that testing is go to a separate water company, and don't let the two results be known by the first testing to see what the results are, so they're not concluding each other. Also, leading on this a little bit, I'll finish up. The county road, it was said was well-maintained. From 485 to 555, the two residents, myself and Mr. Ray Romaninski next door, are the only two people that do any work on that road to that gate in the past five years that I know of. Five years ago, the vineyard ran a backhoe down it in the muddy part of the winter, and that was it. That's the only people that have worked on the road. They had issues this past winter where they come in and gravelled the road up to 485 on the 500 property, and that's as far as the road has been maintained. Thank you. Goodbye.
Anybody else wishing to speak on this item?
Hi, my name's Diane Duker, and I live on George Road. And it's my understanding that there have been some changes in the configuration of the land, but my, I actually share a border just a little bit, but I do share a boundary. And it could be because there are different parcels and things have changed that that would be why I did not receive any notification. I'm here because a neighbor sent me an email, so I guess I did get noticed, but I didn't actually from the county, so that concerns me. The other thing is, is I know the well at 4425 Highland Springs has gone dry, and we've been in our property 36 years, and this was the very first year that we had no runoff. We have two runoff, one's a drainage area and one's a creek that runs through our property, and it was the very, very first year that there wasn't a drop in that runoff, and we need the water to refill the aquifers. So I just want to let you know what's happening out there in this area. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Toni Scully. I live on George Road, and I do have a, my parcel joins these parcels, and I share Diane's concern that I don't think all the property owners got informed about this hearing because of the change in the configuration, the lot line adjustments and all. I'm happy to see that it's all indoor grows. That's what we agreed on. But we are concerned with the water situation, and I was kind of shocked to hear Eric describe the water table in Big Valley as stout, but I realize you were looking at reports from Sonoma County data. No, well, anyway, I don't, I don't think that's an accurate description of this water table. I know, I just think we need a hydrology report on this project too, because we don't want to end up out there like these people in the project before whose wells are all dry already. Now we have a chance to do something about it. And indoor grows, they grow, they can grow crop after crop after crop every year, not just one crop a year. Our water, I'm really thrilled they have such a 100 gallon an hour, a minute well. Ours is like 11 if we're lucky. I didn't get the next door neighbor, but the next parcel, they have nine gallons a minute, and we certainly don't have a high discharge rate up there. And I'm not a hydrologist. I don't know what this kind of pumping down below us would do to the water table, but I think we do need to find that out. And we do need to consider the rural residential areas around these projects that were started in the early application process. Anyway, so I just think the water statistics that have been brought up, none of them today have been germane to a historic drought that we're looking at now. I mean, the last one, 2006 and 2012 studies, that's just crazy. And a study done in February about water use that's going to occur later on in the year is not really accurate to the problem either. So that's my main thing, that we just need more study on the hydrology in this situation. Thank you.
Do we have any hands in the Zoom room, Jake?
No, at this moment, there are no hands raised in the Zoom room.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Petra Bergstrom. I'm also adjoining neighbor to the project on George Road. I'm actually right behind what used to be their pond and a vineyard on 425 Voight Road. So I'm extremely concerned about the water. We have a big pond on our property. This year, I have never seen it. It's almost dry already, and we have no runoffs from anything, so I'm very concerned about the water. I'm also concerned about, I know it's allowed, but do you realize how big this project is? The first phase one is like a football field. All three, phase three, the three phases together is five football fields big and in growhouses. They're going to see it from up above George Road looking down. There's no way to screen it that I can think of. I think it's going to be a terrible look for the whole area because it looks like an industrial area, I think. Yeah, but the water is my main concern, and I'm, you know, I'm just feel sorry for the people in Clear Lake Oaks, but we don't want to be in the same position that they are in. So that's my point. And I wish that there were other properties that would be more suitable for this, because I, I don't mind the cannabis industry. I just don't think this is the spot for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from the room? If not, we'll close public comment. Back to the commission.
Eric, do you by chance have any updated information since 2006 and 2012 from the, from those water reports? Is there anything more recent?
Yes, there is a well test done on February 17th of 2021. It's referenced within the water analysis provided by Hervitz Environmental, which is dated March 30th, 2021. The firm that prepared the water analysis is based in Santa Rosa. It was prepared by Lee Hervitz, who's a certified hydrologist. The report itself is, pardon me, 15 pages long. On page 14 of 15, it lists conclusions, and this is what the professional hydrologists concluded. Estimated water for cultivation, four acre-feet per year. Estimated water for vineyard irrigation, six acre-feet per year. There is a vineyard on the property, and so it's kind of a mixed-use property that actually has an active need for additional water. There are other vineyards in the vicinity, by the way. This is a highly productive agricultural area. Employee water use, they estimate 0.05 acre-feet per year. One acre foot is 440,000 gallons of water, just to put it into perspective. Total estimated site water use is projected to be 10.05 acre-feet per year, so that would be about 4,400,000 gallons, just doing a rough math. Estimated annual recharge, 16.5 acre-feet per year. Sustained well yield after six hours of pumping was 90 gallons a minute. Now, that test was admittedly done in the winter. It was done in February, just so that's clear. Peak daily water demand, they estimate 17,437 gallons per day. They go on to say, "The quantity of groundwater to be used for the project compared to the quantity of available groundwater indicates that pumping for the proposed project is unlikely to result in significant declines in groundwater elevations or depletion of groundwater resources over time." They go on to say, "The horizontal and vertical separation between the project well and neighboring properties should not result in significant well interference." While the project well is proximate to an intermittent stream, its flow is typically reduced to disconnect, disconnected pools by April, just as water use is starting to increase at the site, and therefore no significant impact to stream flow is anticipated." And then finally, it says, "No water quality issues have been identified that would inhibit the development of this project."
Thank you, Eric.
I probably ought to add that there are five appendices to this water analysis. Back to the table of contents here. And I had somebody inquire about appendix C. I didn't know what the source of appendix C was, and I've realized today that it was part of this water analysis. But appendix A is site photographs. Appendix B is a well completion report when the well was initially installed. Appendix C is the well yield test that occurred in February of 2021. Appendix D is the radius of pumping influence, and appendix E is laboratory analytical results, and those are all part of the Hervitz water analysis.
And Eric, the question of aesthetics in terms of the hoop houses, is there any type of design that can minimize impacts?
Well, these are not hoop houses. These are actually full-blown greenhouses. Yes, there are three different aesthetic conditions. I think I'm recommending a six-foot tall fence, but this issue came up with another greenhouse cultivation, and the planning commission actually required a taller fence. I think it was an eight-foot tall fence that had screening on it. Would that be material, would it be materially, would it matter that much? It might, yeah. You know, that extra two feet would make it a lot harder to see at least part of the building, if not much of it. So the aesthetic conditions are in the conditions of approval on page two and three. Condition aesthetics one, prior to cultivation- Uh, condition aesthetics, one, prior to cultivation, uh, applicants shall install blackout screening to block light from migrating and be visible from outside of each greenhouse. Uh, blackout screening shall be maintained for the life of the project. Condition number two, all cannabis related buildings shall be screened from view from neighboring lots and public roads by a minimum six foot tall screening fence. That could be bumped up to eight. It would probably require a building permit if it's over seven feet. And it may require special engineering, but it could be done. Um, AES number three, prior to any phase, all cultivation areas shall incorporate a vegetative plant screening consisting of trees being planted at 25 foot intervals. Vegetation screening shall be irrigated, shall consist of native trees and shall be maintained in good health for the life of the project. So those are the three aesthetically related, uh, conditions that we've proposed.
Thank you.
I believe we can go to eight feet, can't we, without triggering a major use permit?
Yeah. Well, it'd be included within this major use permit. So yeah, they're fine.
Any other questions for Eric?
Uh, sure. Will this, uh, since it is a mixed light, um, operation, is it actually going to be 12 months out of the year being, uh, cultivation? Or is it just the seasons that are usually used?
Anecdotally, I'm told that they can grow three crops per year. So I would assume that that implies year round cultivation. But I'm not a cultivator, so I'm no expert in, you know, when the right time to grow is and what a greenhouse produces versus outdoor. Um, but in my talks with other cultivators, apparently they can have three, uh, individual cultivations per year inside of a greenhouse because the environment's more controlled.
Is the applicant here? Do you want to come up, maybe you can answer the question?
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name's Jennifer Berg and I'm the applicant for this project. We can, um, actually cultivate three crops per year versus what an outdoor crop can do. Typically, outdoor, you run two crops per year. But because of the controlled environment and fully enclosed greenhouses, we are able to run three crops per year. We also use a little bit less water because of the controlled environment and the, um, lack of evaporation of the water as well.
Also a quick question. Uh, on the maps that we are given, it shows, uh, the two different, um, I have two different stars, is that just symbolizing both the, uh, acres that are going to be used, but where is the actual grow going to be?
The parcels, yeah.
Is it in both or just one?
It's just on one parcel.
On the north side or south side?
It's on the south side.
Okay, thank you.
I have a map of the cultivation area, if that helps. Do you guys have that available?
It should be, we have it.
Okay. With regards to the water, our geo hydrologists came out and did the test in February because we were getting prepared to, um, finish our application and get our foot in the door in April, which is why we had the well testing done in February. Originally, our project was double the size and we were planning to do outdoor cultivation. But the resolution passed in December, um, protecting that farmland and forced us indoors, which creates kind of a burden as far as the build out goes. It's very expensive to do the commercially and environmentally controlled greenhouses. But we have, um, go ahead and move forward with all new studies to go ahead and do that project. So our project size overall, our square footage of canopy was cut in half, um, with the change of that, uh, resolution passing. And we did new studies in order to accommodate this new type of cultivation, including a new water test, which was as current as it could possibly be. Although, yes, it is in the winter. It is within the drought and the realm of the drought. Our well is an agricultural well. It's been used to irrigate, um, vineyards for many years. And it is extremely stout in production. I know that some of the neighbors have wells that aren't agricultural wells. They are domestic wells that they're using for their homes. And I understand that those aren't the same types of wells. And they probably don't recharge as, at as great of a rate as an agricultural well that's used for irrigation of vineyards and other agricultural crops.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
How do you, how do you feel about eight foot fencing?
I would be fine with eight foot fencing.
And also, uh, the maintenance from, I believe it was 485 to 500 Voight Road, is that something that, um, has been addressed or that could be, um, addressed?
Absolutely. So we're currently in contract to purchase the property from the current owner who operates the vineyards. And, um, we're just awaiting the lot line adjustment completion in order to, and approval of this project. So our contract hinges on our project being approved before we close escrow. And as soon as it's ours, um, one of the first things we're going to be doing is taking care of the road, um, putting more chip and seal down and making sure that it's shored up to accommodate trucks. I mean, we don't have heavy duty trucks, but we have regular trucks that will come in and out versus regular vehicles, smaller vehicles. So we just want to shore up the road anyhow. And hopefully that will help improve, improve our relations with the neighbors.
Uh, this question might be for Eric as well, as the applicant. Um, so there is a vineyard on one of the, um, on one of the parcels. Will that be ma- uh, maintained? Or what is the plan for the vineyard as well as the water usage goes to be able to sustain the, the vineyard and the operation as well?
So there is vineyard on one of the parcels and then a very small block on the second parcel, which will also house the cultivation. Um, the well is sufficient to handle both the cultivation and the vineyards. Um, we do have a vineyard manager that manages the water and handles the wells. And, uh, I think he's here today. I don't know if he's prepared to give public comment, but we will keep him on board. And we do intend to keep the vineyards. I know that the aesthetics is very important to the neighbors and we do want to keep all of the vineyards in place for them and for their view. Kind of mitigate and offset some of the other things that are going to occur going forward. The eight foot fencing should help with that as well as the vegetative screening that was proposed as a mitigation measure.
Do you have any other questions? Okay.
I don't have any other questions, I don't think.
Okay, well.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just, I'm just sort of wondering how we get ahead of the water issue. And what I mean by that is rather than at the back end of one of these hearings, tacking on the requirement for a hydrology report and then having to continue the entire affair until a time in the future, can we make a detailed hydrology report like you referred to here? Just a part of the application process, especially now that we're in a period of severe drought? Because it seems like we circle back to this. And if it's unresolved or we don't feel like we have adequate information based on the water information we do get, uh, we just continue it.
Well, the code is largely silent on water. Um, the requirement within Article 27 simply says that a water availability analysis is required. It doesn't say anything more than that. So it doesn't really give us a clear path as to, you know, what, what's involved with it. I mean, I, I think at the very least, they have to do a, uh, a well test showing, uh, the depth of the aquifer at the start of the test, a significant runtime, probably at least four hours, the depth after the four hour test. And then a shutdown period where it is allowed to recharge for a half hour, an hour, to show what the rate of recharge is. You know, that would be a starting point. What that doesn't do is it doesn't say, uh, how much storage capacity is in the aquifer that is being drawn from. And so while it may appear that a well is significantly productive, um, you know, it, it could be a 10 foot deep aquifer. You know, I'm not, I'm not sure how they would determine the depth of the aquifer. So to answer your question, Commissioner, um, we do require a water availability analysis, but the terms of what that is, is fairly vague. And so I think, um, you know, it would, it would behoove all of us to require a more in-depth study upfront. Um, it would be nice if it were codified, so we would have something at staff level to point to.
And we have to be consistent.
Mm-hmm.
Right. Um, in the case of Voight, uh, I feel that they've met, met the burden. I mean, they've provided us with a fairly in-depth water analysis. That's not the case with other, uh, files that I've seen.
Right.
So in Voight's case, I think they've covered their water, um, projected use, uh, actual draw. Um, they've given us a well test. You could require monthly well tests be done. That would incur additional costs to the applicant. Um, and I'm not sure what the threshold of that would be. So, you know, even if they run a test once a month, if there's no minimum threshold, it seems kind of pointless. So, I don't know. Um,
No, thank you. That was helpful and I think it's something we should consider. I don't know if, I mean, the ordinance is severable. I don't know if we have to alter the ordinance before we could require that.
Right, well, as I said in my presentation at the last meeting, your commission has a lot of leeway. Staff has a lot of discretion. This is a discretionary decision. The decision is based on evidence. Staff collects that evidence. They have a lot of authority to, to request information necessary to make the analysis that they need to make in order for you to make the findings that you must make. So even if there were a threshold in the ordinance, that threshold may not always be applicable in specific circumstances. Land use is very fluid. Your analysis is site and project specific. It's unique in time and place. Um, so what may be appropriate for one project that seems similar may not be appropriate for the other project that seems similar. So thresholds are not a determinative for you in that way. They don't, the absence of one does not prevent you from acting. It doesn't prevent you from asking for information. It doesn't prevent you from, from, um, requesting the data you need in order to make an informed decision. So if you have, if you have determined that there is information that you need in order to make the findings that, that you must make, then you can ask staff for that information. If staff in their analysis finds that they don't have the authority to request that information under the ordinance, then they can ask the, they can ask the board for that authority. But, um, they do have a lot of leeway. My understanding is this is information they do ask from other kinds of, of applicants with different kinds of uses. So I don't see that there's a barrier here for requesting that information for cannabis grows. Um, so if you, if you have found a threshold, I mean, not threshold, excuse me. If you have found that you have, that there's information you need in, because circumstances have changed, like the drought or because the, the site is very specific to certain circum, certain facts and circumstances, like it's a neighborhood or it's, um, got so many people on, on, you know, using a particular water source or, um, there's other kinds of things you can ask for. You could, you, you are not restricted just because there isn't a threshold in the ordinance itself. If that's helpful. I know it's, it's not as directed as, as you may want, but.
That was helpful. I'd certainly agree with Eric that not every application has the kind of detail that you just read from the February report. And in that sense, we get inconsistent information as commissioners when we're trying to evaluate one case by case application versus another. And I'm not an expert either. I don't know what additional detail would be helpful to require upfront. But I had some questions about water until Eric read those additional details from February. And, um, I off, I thought the same thing, you know, 2006 data are obsolete. But, um, I don't feel like, and it's not staff's fault, but I don't feel like we're getting consistent water information with each application. And if there were certain things, boxes to check, you know, regarding hydrology with every report, especially as Nicole points out, we enter a new period or a different period, a severe drought period. And those, those concerns become more acute.
Well, for, for my part, I was relying on the, uh, 2021 well test more so than the water analysis, although there's quite a bit of, uh, support data that is valid within that water analysis. So between the well test and the water analysis, I felt confident that, uh, this project could be served adequately. So that was what I found in looking at the water. And I look at water pretty closely. Uh, water, traffic, uh, security, um, and some other categories.
Um, I have a quick question before it leaves my brain. Um, is there going to be, so there's three phases. Is there anything, um, in writing that requires them to do like an additional well test before they start phase two and phase three? Just to kind of monitor the usage that way or how it's been going?
No, uh, you could add a condition that, uh, requires an annual well test be brought back to the planning commission if you want.
Right. But what is that really going to do besides just kind of give us all an idea of their usage and all of that?
Well, again, it comes back to the fact that there's no minimum threshold.
Right.
So if their well produces one gallon a minute, you know, um, that's a problem. It's a problem for them. It may be a problem for the neighbors. Uh, again, I just don't know the duration of the, uh, aquifer or the depth or capacity or anything related to the, um, overall area. And this particular well is strong. I'm not convinced that the area water table is that strong based on testimony. But is it fixable? I don't know.
You're, um, you, the information you provided was very helpful. So I do appreciate your, uh, report.
Okay, if we have other questions or comments, um, can take some action? You can't, you have to come up to the mic.
Is it too late to make a comment?
Public comments closed. We'll open it for your, reopen it.
Uh, I disagree with this gentleman.
Please, please state your name.
I'm six Gerald Todd, 610 Voight. Uh, I've had, this last year, I've had to put, um, a submersible in. And then I had to put in a tank, which, uh, it sucks the water up into it. So I can pump, it's a 1,500 gallon tank. And that pump burned up because it, uh, it got air in it and it burnt up. So I had to replace it. And now I've got a place where it takes, it pumps it up. And then once the motor starts to generate so many amps, it'll shut down. And then it takes from five minutes to two hours for the water to come back up. And when it does, it pumps. And I'm barely maintaining, I'm, I've lost my garden, I've lost my lawn. And I tried to make our little place, it's only an acre. I tried to make it a little paradise. Now it's a desert. So, you know, when they pumped that, it was during rain. It was raining. It's not raining, it hasn't rained in how many months? So I think your report saying it's, you should do it in February is wrong. Why don't you do it in January? It's raining then also, you know? Let's do fat, you know? Apples and oranges, let's do it right. So I think your report is no good for, for us. And if we go deeper, that what's, what's happened, there's like two, two water tables out there. One is we get good water. Go down deeper, there's sulfur and mercury. So if I go deeper, I'll have more water problems. I'll have other water problems. I, I have a, um, ozinator now, which takes the iron out. What that does is it pumps oxygen into the water. And then it has, looks like a big air cleaner and that sucks all the carb, uh, the, uh, minerals out of it. And then I can hose it off. So I get by, I'm just getting by. So we have other problems out there. And I don't think they'll, they can pump that much water right now. Thank you.
If I may, commissioners?
Yes.
Staff has described this project as a phased project. Um, if staff has analyzed all three phases under one SECO analysis, I'd like them to address that now, because otherwise phased projects typically require a SECO review at each phase in the future.
Yeah, the SECO review took into account all three phases. It actually assumed build out.
Thank you for that clarification. Any, anything else from the commission?
You have to come up if you want to make a comment. Can't raise your hand. It's, it's still open.
Hi, my name's Almiol Nidam. I'm one of the owners of this project. Uh, so the well that is in question right now, um, actually produces 150 to 200 gallons a minute. And it's throttled down, so the sediment doesn't come up because they water, they irrigate the grapes. So we really only need that well to produce like an hour of water a day for the cannabis. And they water the. and they water the grapes already for like eight to 10 hours a day? Eight to 10 hours a day? And also, when the property just got divided, this well is going to be watering, there's no exact number, but 30 to 40% less grapes. So in all reality, after this is all said and done, this well is going to be using like 25% less water than it was using last year just to water grapes. So it's all really just a non-issue. This cannabis farm is going to be using less water out of this well than it was using last year altogether. So just to throw that in there.
I'm Peggy Todd on 610 Voight Road. I had a question for the applicants. Again, on that table, why does it show no water use for employees for five months?
I apologize, Peggy.
Yes, sorry.
Patty, sorry. It's okay. You just have to direct your comments to us.
Okay. I don't know whether the applicants can answer that. And then I don't know whether or not there's any showing any water use for frost protection. And I did look up some information on the different growing vineyards versus marijuana grow, and they said it uses basically 50% more water than vineyards. I don't know if that's true in indoor. And just, I want to just ask the commissioners. Page 10 had all the data on precipitation, groundwater, and recharge data, and it was from 2006. So I still have to ask you if you're going to accept that kind of critical water data that's 15 years old. So, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the commission for action, discussion, questions.
Any comments or questions for staff before we're going to make a motion? Okay. Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion. I move that the Planning Commission find that the initial study IS-19-60 applied for by Voight Road Holdings LLC on property located at 425 and 500 Voight Road, Lakeport, and further described as APNs 008-032-65 and 008-043-02 will not have a significant effect on the environment, and therefore a mitigated negative declaration shall be approved with the findings listed in the staff report dated July 8, 2021.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Furthermore, I move that the Planning Commission find that the major use permit UP-19-41 applied for by Voight Road Holdings LLC on property located at 425 and 500 Voight Road, Lakeport, and further described as APNs 008-032-65 and 008-043-02 does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 of the Lake County zoning ordinance, and the major use permit be granted subject to the conditions and with the findings listed in the staff report dated July 8, 2021.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Okay, I'd like to note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven-counter-day appeal period. If there's a disagreement with the Planning Commission's decision, an appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. Appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 p.m. on or before the seven-counter-day following the Planning Commission's final determination. Okay, we're going to take up our 915 item. Public care and to consider use permit UP-21-02, applicant owner Coastal LLC, Tyler Mitchell, location 6565 Wilkinson Road, 6620 State Route 29, 6213 Wilkinson Road, Kelseyville, California, on property consisting of 244-plus acres. APN 007-015-13, 007-016-13, and 007-015-63.
Excuse me, everybody?
Take the conversation outside.
If there's any conversations going in the room, could you guys please take it outside? Thank you.
Okay, turn it over to Eric.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Still Eric Porter, Associate Planner for Lake County. The proposal is for 11 A-Type III medium outdoor licenses for a total of 487,922 square feet of outdoor cultivation area with an estimated 420,000 square feet of canopy. They're also requesting one A-Type III self-distribution license. On-site water storage would consist of 9,2500-gallon water tanks for irrigation and one 5,000-gallon water tank to be used for fire suppression. Location of the project is, if you're on Highway 29 approaching Lakeport or Kelseyville, it's just when the hilly part of that stretch of the highway ends. And so it's kind of a combination of where it begins to flatten out versus where it's still hilly. The site is located about a half mile away from a church and about a half mile away from schools. We did receive a letter from the superintendent of the Kelseyville Unified School District strenuously objecting to this project due to its proximity to schools. And I think you've got a copy of that letter. There were several other letters that were submitted that were in opposition to the And those should all be in your possession. So I think you've got everything that I received on it. And I think there are about four letters that are opposed to it for different reasons, primarily its proximity to the town of Kelseyville. So the letter I'm referring to came on an email dated June 28, 2021, from Mosqueda Maribel, who works for the Kelseyville Unified School District. This is a fairly big cultivation area. It's 11 licenses. I don't remember if they're phasing the project or not. I think they are. But the build-out is what is reflected on Pages 1 and 2. So the total cultivation area is just under 500,000 square feet. The properties are pretty big. There are three of them. They combined for a total of 244 acres. They're zoned rural lands, and the northernmost property is zoned R1. No cultivation would occur on the R1 zone property. Cultivation primarily would take place on the southernmost property, which is APN 007-016-13. They are within the boundary of a mapped exclusion area, but the cultivation area is actually outside of that mapped boundary. Water usage, on page 4 of 18 of the staff report, those were the numbers that were given to us. Maximum water usage is shown to be 1,360,000 gallons per month through the summer months, and then it declines slightly in October and is cut in half by November, which is when they typically cultivate. General plan conformance, rural lands is the primary designation of the property in addition to low-density residential, but since the low-density part of it is not being used for cultivation, we didn't analyze the property for compliance with low-density residential, but rather with rural lands, which is consistent with where the cultivation site will be. Really, the only general plan policies that relate to it would be economic development, and I believe they're going to employ up to 10, between 10 and 20 people. So that would generate 20 to 40 average daily trips during cultivation time. Access to the site is taken from Wilkinson Road, which terminates on the property, and it passes through areas that have smaller lots, I would say, to the north. It passes through a, it's a suburban residential neighborhood is what it is. So there would be some increased trips to Wilkinson. SECO analysis, we prepared a mitigated negative declaration, uploaded that to the state. We had no adverse comments related to the project that we received due to the SECO analysis. We are recommending that some aesthetic, some conditions mitigation measures for aesthetics, air quality, biology, cultural, geological hazards, and noise be added, and those are found in the staff report, beginning on page 9 and ending on page 14. As is the case with any major use permit, we had to make six findings from Article 51, that the use won't be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the people living or working in the vicinity, that the project is adequate size, shape, location, and physical characteristics to accommodate the type of use and the level of development proposed, that streets, highways, and pedestrian facilities are reasonably adequate to accommodate the proposed use, that there are adequate public or private services related to water, sewer, fire, police, and power to serve the project, that the project is in conformance with applicable provisions and policies of code general plan, and in this case, it would be the Kelseyville Area Plan, and then that there are no violations on the property of Chapters 5, 17, 21, 23, or 26 of the Lake County Code. We have to make findings from Article 27, subsection AT, that the proposed use complies with all development standards within the applicable code sections, that the applicant is qualified to make the application described in Section 1 II Sub G, and that the applicant application complies with qualifications for a permit described in Section 1 II Sub I. We were able to make those findings. So with that, we are recommending that the Planning Commission adopt mitigated negative declaration 2102 and approve use permit 2102 with the following findings, as noted on page 17 of 18 and 18 of 18. So that concludes my presentation, unless there are any questions.
If any questions for Eric?
Excuse me?
Sure. Eric?
Yeah.
So it shows three different parcels, right?
Correct.
The grow will be on the northern side one?
Southern.
The farthest one?
It's the one farthest down on the page.
That's ending in 13, I mean, 007-001, or 016?
13.
13, right.
Yeah, if you look at page 3, it's the bottom of, well, it actually crosses property lines. Part of the cultivation is on Lot 7, I can't read it. I think it's 1513.
Yeah.
Yeah, 007, 015, 013.
Yes, and the rest of it, most of it is on 007, 016, 13. So I would say about one quarter of it is on the middle lot, and the remainder is on the bottom lot.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll open it up to public comment. Want to make a comment, please state your name.
Hi, I'm Gloria Vega. I made a comment before on somebody else's, but this is the one I'm major concerned about. Like I said, I live in the neighborhood. We're backed up right next to the field. We have the road, Wilkinson Road, that goes up, and then it goes up, up higher. And we're not allowed to go up higher because it has a gate. So it's private property, I understand it. But when they come down Wilkinson, it's public property, and they're going to be bringing their vehicles, their trucks, and the bad smell. Like I said, it gives me a headache, and I can't function. When the neighborhood guys were growing their small little grows in their backyard, I couldn't go out in my backyard to enjoy my stuff. My grandkids, we had to stay indoors because it smelled so bad. I couldn't run my air conditioner because the smell came in. And now I'm going to have this huge 244 acres of pot growing. I can't do it. And like I said, our neighborhood is going to be destroyed because kids, and we have the high school there, we have the elementary school, and we have the middle school, and they're all in that area. They're going to be traveling, kids are going to be coming there, and the traffic, if it has two entrances, Canotai and Wilkinson. And on Wilkinson, it's a one-way bridge. And if you're going to have these vehicles coming this way, and you have parents who are bringing their kids the other way, because Canotai is busier than Hack, at 8:00, don't go down Main Street because you can't get into it, because the parents are going off to Canotai. They're coming down Wilkinson. And I live right on the corner of the land in Single Springs. So I see the traffic coming and going. And it's at 8:00, it starts, it actually starts at 7:30 until 5:00, because then we got parents coming home from work. And it's a residential area. We can't have safety for our kids and being near that high school and the elementary school, all those schools. Kelseyville School District is right there. And I worked at the school, and I know the kids coming and going to the kids. If they get off early, they're out there at noon time. So we need to, you guys really need to think about not letting this go through, because it, the smell, the traffic, and protection of our kids is my big concern. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Renee Vega. I live in Kelseyville. Moved in back in '76. So we've been living in that house, my wife and I. But there's only actually, to go to the Kelseyville schools in the back, there's only actually one way, and that was through Canotai. And then the other part is going through Wilkinson, which is a one-lane bridge. So, I mean, the traffic is going to be, but I've always wanted to leave Kelseyville. Maybe if it passes, this is probably the reason why I should just leave and go to another state. But I'm leaving it up to you guys. Thank you.
My name is Tino Gamber, and I reside here in Lakeport, 1601 Miller Drive. And I'm in support of this project. I know there was a comment just made that this project consisting of 244 acres backed up to their home, which is going to be growing nothing but pot. I'm sure that the board is aware that of the 244 acres, this project consists of 11 acres, not 244 acres of marijuana. It's a big difference, 244 acres of marijuana versus 11. It's a beautiful site. It's got gorgeous views of the lake. To the south, it has mature landscaping to buffer the freeway. To enter this project, you will be entering off of Highway 29. It's got a private road, county-maintained, 20 feet wide with turnouts, and it's got gray water. So I'm in support of this project. Thank you.
Am I allowed to speak?
Yeah. If you like.
Appreciate all you do. I go through a lot of board meetings. I know how you feel. I am David McQueen. I'm the superintendent, Kelseyville Unified School District. Lived in Lake County my entire life. My grandfather was a parent rancher. I, you know, I have a lot of feelings about this. I'm for business. I'm for agriculture. It is legal, and it would bring money into our district. I mean, into our, yeah, into our district, into our town. The problem I have with this is the, how close it is to the, to our schools. The problem I have with this is the, the, how close it is to the, to our schools. One of the property, I was talking with Eric, the ed code is a thousand feet, but, you know, I've got Mount Vista, Kelseyville Elementary, the high school, right in that area, and the one property borders, it's only like about two hundred feet from the thousand. So, you know, I mean, there's a reason why the ed code says, says certain things about these type of things near schools. And it will, I mean, if it was an indoor grow, that'd be a different thing with the odor, but because it's an outdoor grow, they are going to smell, and it's going to smell into our school district. And I have hundreds of kids that live in that Connaughtie terrace area, Blue Court, all of that, Wilkinson. Traffic will be an issue, because if you've ever been to Kelseyville, in the morning and in the afternoon, it's a traffic jam. So even though I understand what they're saying about the roads, those do need, there's going to have to be some type of mitigation, because there's certain times during the day, and you all know it, you know it, when you have our buses running, it takes up the whole, and that area is a congestion. Wilkinson into the Main Street, that's a huge congestion area from eight, actually seven thirty to about eight fifteen, and then about one thirty to three thirty. So I oppose it, not on the business aspect of it, or even for a moral aspect, I just oppose it for the fact that it's so close to my schools, and I have to stick up for my kids. And thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Thank you for your time. My name is Tyler Mitchell, the applicant. If I could just share a brief packet with you guys that I've made for all you guys, just to give it a little bit of a better visual as far as the distances, a little fun facts, excuse me, a few facts about prevailing winds and whatnot to help mitigate any odor concerns. More than, if, I just want to make this as brief as possible. I know things is probably running a little late today. So if there are any questions for me, I'm here to answer any concerns. If I could touch base on a few things, just to clarify that kind of ambiguous statement, we're, we're, there is one parcel that's, sounds like it's twelve hundred feet away from the school. However, the farm is located to the south away from the school, and as you can see from the visual, our closest neighbors like, I think, thirteen hundred approximately, and the school's a mile away. So my wife and I moved into town, closing the property late last winter, moved to town earlier, earlier this year. Every single day, the prevailing wind is from west to east, or if it's not west to east, it's north to south, completely blowing every single day away from the school. One of the conditions of approval, Eric also, thank you for all your time, for everything that you've helped us with the planning. One of the conditions that Eric came up with was we plant something that blooms during the same time as the, as our garden, to help any, any other odor concern. So that's definitely something that we want to implement as far as mitigating any odor concerns. The traffic is, we would consider it minimal. I know the numbers according to SEQUA studies have to be factored into on the busiest days, the absolute, absolute busiest days. However, with our particular farming style, we really only need one to two person, people on site on any given day, which would cut our daily, and myself and my wife live on site, so that cuts the daily trips down to zero for myself. If my business partner decides to show up, possibly one daily trip, or two if he's going home, I should say. And we would have a mandate for carpooling on any of the other days. Seasonal, seasonal helping days, for example, when, just to use another example, in the agriculture industries, when the grapes come and tend to the grapes, they bring in, you know, a few helping hands, carpool in, and it's not an everyday occurrence. You don't see fifty farmhands in the vine, in the vineyards on any given day. It's, it's really seasonal. So that same goes for us. I do have some additional data on water. I spoke with your Water Resources Department here. I understand that they're working on their GSP. They have two consultants helping them develop that GSP. Both consultants had said that the Big Valley Water Basin is stout, like Eric has mentioned. DWR released some information on their website. It's actually also linked to the water resources here. The data's from twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, and I highlighted a comment, I don't have in front of me, there was absolutely no comments on water decline for the Big Valley, Big Valley Basin. I understand in times of drought, it's been documented over long, long periods of time that water basins help us get through droughts, and then when the rain comes, it does help to strengthen the recharge. So there's, there is recorded documents for heavy drought years in the past that are similar to this year. I'm not, I'm not saying it's apples to apples from this year to any other year, I'm just saying that the Big Valley Basin is known to fully recharge even after, even after a recorded drought. Other than that, I think that's everything I really wanted to touch on unless you guys have any other questions.
I do have questions, but I don't know if we want to leave public comment open and then bring it back, or do you, is there anyone in the Zoom room?
Do we have anybody in the Zoom room, Jake, who wants to make a comment on this project?
No, there are no hands raised in the Zoom room.
Okay.
Okay, well, is there anybody else in chambers that wants to make a comment?
I wonder if I can say something on, on one of the comments that was made by somebody else, can I say something about that?
If it's new information.
Yes, just approach the podium, thank you.
Okay. The gentleman said-
Make sure you state your first and last name one more time.
Okay, Gloria Vega.
Thank you.
The gentleman said that it's off of twenty-nine, and it, it is off of twenty-nine, but you have to go down the street onto Wilkinson to get. It's off of the freeway, and you can see it, because if I can see my house, I can see the lot. So I don't know exactly, because I didn't bring my map to see exactly where the grow is going to be, the eleven acres, but if you come down the hill, I can look, and I can see my house, and I can see the open field. And that's where he says, you know, it's a beautiful sight, but I don't want to grow there, you know? I, you know, so you've got to think of it, he, she said, it's off of twenty-nine, and it is, it is off of twenty-nine, but you've got to go on Wilkinson to get to it, or through Connaughtie.
Thank you.
Okay, well, closed public comment. I do have a few questions for the applicant, just some minor questions.
Yeah.
So, so I guess one of the questions I have in, in considering the application and moving into the area, I'm sure you're aware of the school's presence in the neighborhood. What specific measures have you taken, or will you be taking, to reduce impact in regards to odor? You did mention the amount of traffic, it sounds very minimal, but is there anything else you considered in regards to the concerns with the school? Kids in the community, possibly on foot, you know, aesthetics, anything like that that'll maybe obstruct view if it's not already out of view, and something to deal with any, any possible odors that might linger?
Yeah, of course. So as I suggested, we're, you know, I haven't measured it recently, I think we're approximately forty-six hundred feet away from the school. From the Wilkinson Road, where the, where the, where you would access the property, it's about three quarters of a mile up the, up the road. So we have topography, we have a large stand of trees blocking not only the view, but potential odor. The conditions of approval to plant anything that bloo, something fragrant that blooms, maybe similar to lavender or something, something that provides just a buffer. The prevailing winds, security from, security from the school would be the, not only the local mandate, but the state mandate for security fencing and cameras. There's only private residences off our road, so even though there's been some debate about whether it's a public road or a, or, excuse me, public road or private road, it's pretty much a private road. I mean, to make, to the long and short of it, it's, there's not really any need for the public to go up there, there's no public access, there's no public land whatsoever. And to be honest, we, we don't encourage, we, we like our privacy, and we don't encourage people to come by. So there's not going to be an open invitation for any school kids to walk up the road. It's, it's actually, you cannot access the property from Connaughtie, like prior comments were suggesting. There's only an access through Wilkinson, and then in the back, there's a emergency fire escape through our friends at the vineyard behind us, which is also a private road. So I would say, to answer your question more specifically, topography, distance, and prevailing winds is our number, is our top three buffers for any odor.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else before I chime in?
No? Okay. Hi, I'm very familiar with the area. Full disclosure, I grew up in Kelseyville. I'm familiar with where your project site is, proximity to the schools, the one-way bridge, that is obviously not in good shape. That comes off of Wilkinson, okay, that one that comes down the hill before you go straight onto your property, down to like where the gate is. That's been an issue for, I'm not going to age myself, but it's been an issue for a very long time. I'm not sure if that can handle the amount of traffic, I'm a little concerned about that. If you were to take Connaughtie and cut over to Single Springs, or I forget whatever the road that is on the side road, but it is a neighborhood. I mean, there's kids out there all of the time, that's my main, one of my main concerns is that. The water, to me, isn't really that big of an issue. I just feel like, I, I am, I'm pro-project, I love seeing these type of things come in front of us and making an impact on the community. I just, I can't look past the, we're not talking just a, a high school, not just an elementary school, it is all right there. I'm opposed to this project.
Any other comments?
I'm not opposed to this project. I respect your comments, of course, Commissioner. It seems to me that the set, what is this, is it a thousand-foot setback from the school as normally required? The setbacks, the distance seems, seems more than adequate to me. I get the applicant's point about it not being a route for school kids to naturally take to get home or anything like that. And I don't think it's the applicant's fault that the bridge is in such bad shape.
For sure.
And based on my take on the number of employees and the times of day, and they're open until, you know, ten o'clock, I, I just don't see how it adds such a significant load in terms of traffic. That's just my reading of the data.
Absolutely.
So I, for, I myself would be prepared to vote in favor of this today.
And I hon, like, I wish that I could, like, from a bird's eye view, coming down twenty-nine, like, say from Bottle Rock Road or so, coming into town, I wish that I could have somewhat of an idea of visually where it sits on, on the right-hand side.
You can't, you can't, that's, that's actually the beauty of it, you can't see it. So the, like I said, the topography, the large stand of trees, the existing vegetation we have, you can't see it.
How far are you from where that gate is at Wilkinson? How far up from that point is the project location, roughly? Just so I kind of have an idea.
Roughly three quarters of a mile, so over three thousand feet up the road.
Up the road, up, in like up that hill, the grassy hill?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have a question for Eric. On the GIS, I have Farmland Protection Zone, the one thousand-foot buffer. I see that, that northern parcel being cut probably more than half, that is within that Farmland Protection Zone, and the parcel where the majority of the grow is going to be, it has like a little chip in that corner. How does that affect, if it's outdoor or indoor, due to it being in the Farmland Protection Zone?
It actually isn't. It's just outside of it, and I was very careful to measure the cultivation area with respect to the different mapped areas that are shown on our GIS. So it's actually outside of the defined boundary.
And another one, there's also a publicly owned land, which is Kelseyville Dump Road. I have something here, like a green square on the south, on the south side of that parcel as well. That doesn't affect the, I mean, I'm sure you have to be a thousand feet from that as well, or what is the, okay?
It is. I actually measured it on GIS to make sure that the blue property on page three of eighteen on the staff report is more than a thousand feet from the cultivation site. I thought I mentioned it in the staff report, but I'm not seeing it. It just shows the, I'm looking at page three under what's around it to the west, says Route twenty-nine, RR, LDR, MDR, medium density, SR, suburban residential. Lot sizes, most are developed with single-family homes. Grace Evangelical Church is on parcel seven, fifteen, thirty-four, however, the church is more than a thousand feet from twenty-nine and about fifteen hundred feet from the cultivation area. I don't remember what that ozone property contains. I think it contains water tanks.
I think it's another one that I'm talking about. It's, I see that blue rectangle there.
That's all you're talking about?
No, it's, it's another one, it says Kelseyville Dump Road, it's-
It's, it's referring to the Enviren Star per state and local mandate. It's Enviren, I think it's Enviren Star. You have to locate any particular toxic hazardous waste sites, the old Kelseyville dumps, which is no longer used for a dump. I've actually spoke with Ed Pepper in Public Works, they mainly do wood chipping out there, and they store all of their cut trees. But in the way, way, way in the past, it was registered, that particular small portion was registered as a dump site. So I think per, per your ordinance, it's, would be a thousand feet away from, from the project site. So basically, a previously disturbed area outside of any of parcels that we own, it would show up, that's what that square, I think is, I think is, Eric has it on the report, I believe, if I'm not mistaken.
So I guess, Eric, what I was, what I'm mainly trying to get at is the, I have the picture here, I don't know if you can come up here or to see. So this is the Farmland Protection Zone, coming through, cutting that top parcel in half, and then that little corner, which would be, I don't remember what the ordinance was, that you had to be a thousand foot from that line, or if it touched the property-
The line includes a thousand-foot setback.
So it's, as long as you're not within that?
Right. If it's beyond that boundary, then it should be fine.
Oh, sorry, I was, I was thinking of something else, my apologies.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other questions for the applicant? Under discussion? Okay, are we ready to take some action, or does anybody want to entertain a motion?
Thank you very much for your time.
It's not registered. No?
Mr. Chair, prepared to make an offer, make a motion? I move that the planning commission find that the initial study IS two-one dash oh two, applied for by Coastal LLC on property located at six-five-six-five Wilkinson Road, six-six-two-oh State Route twenty-nine, and six-two-one-three Wilkinson Road, Kelseyville, APNs oh-oh-seven dash oh-one-five dash six-three, oh-oh-seven dash oh-one-five dash one-three, and oh-oh-seven dash, oh-oh-seven dash oh-one-six dash one, dash one-three, will not have a significant effect on the environment, and therefore- And therefore, a mitigated negative declaration shall be approved with the findings listed in the staff report dated July eighth, twenty-twenty-one.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I oppose.
Motion carries.
I move further that the Planning Commission find that the use permit UP two-one dash oh-two, applied for by Coastal LLC on property located at six-five-six-five Wilkinson Road, six-six-two-oh State Route twenty-nine and six-two-one-three Wilkinson Road, Kelseyville, APNs oh-oh-seven dash oh-one-three dash six-three, oh-oh-seven dash oh-one-five dash one-three and oh-oh-seven dash oh-one-six dash one-three does meet the requirements of section fifty-one point four of the Lake County zoning ordinance and the major use permit be granted subject to the conditions and with the findings listed in the staff report dated July eighth, twenty-twenty-one.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Note the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there's a disagreement with the Planning Commission, a decision, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to five P M. Honorable for the seventh calendar day following the Commission's final determination. She will take up our nine twenty A M. item, continuation of Planning Commission hearing, June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one. Public carrying consider major use permit UP nineteen dash twenty. Applicant owner, LDM Operations Inc., location seven-two-nine-five Adobe Creek Road, Kelseyville, California, APN zero-zero-seven dash zero-two-one dash zero-two-three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This should be fairly brief. This was a case of mistaken identity. LDM actually submitted two different applications concurrently for two different properties. These were assigned to somebody else. I received them late twenty nineteen or early twenty twenty. Apparently, the applicant had a discussion with a former employee, former principal planner Turner, regarding withdrawing one of the two applications that they had submitted. They had a falling out with the property owner and I was never informed of that. So I had them on my shelf for an extended period of time until I was able to work on them. One is significantly incomplete still. That's the one that they wanted to move forward with. The one that I proceeded with was the one that I brought to you on June twenty-fourth. On May twenty-ninth of this year, I got an email from LDM Nadia Jamal indicating that they wanted to proceed with the application. I assumed it was this one, the one that I brought to you on June twenty-fourth. It was not. This one is a non-existent application. They were referring to the one on Morgan Valley Road that is still incomplete. So I talked with counsel and with staff. And we were advised that this needs to be denied because there is no applicant. And so there's really no decision to be made. It just needs to formally be denied so we can put this application to rest. Oh, we did get the name right of the corporation, by the way, it's LDM Operations Inc.
So do you, do you still have to open it up for public comment? Or do we just make a motion?
Yeah.
You can open it to public comment?
Okay, we'll open it to public comment. Is anybody in the Zoom room wishing to comment on this item, Jake?
No, there are currently no hands raised in the Zoom room.
Okay, we will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for action.
I'm prepared to make a motion. I move that the Planning Commission find that the initial study IS one-nine dash three-five, originally applied for by LDM Operations Incorporated on property located at seven-two-nine-five Adobe Creek Road, Kelseyville, and further described as APN zero-zero-seven dash zero-two-one dash two-three is no longer valid for file number UP one-nine dash two-zero because there are no applicants as stated in the staff report addendum dated July eighth, twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
Excuse me? And that, and that the application be denied.
And that the application be denied.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Further, I move that the Planning Commission find that the use permit UP one-nine dash two-zero, originally applied for by LDM Operations Incorporated on property located at seven-two-nine-five Adobe Creek Road, Kelseyville, and further described as APN zero-zero-seven dash zero-two-one dash two-three does not meet the requirements of section fifty-one point four and section twenty-seven at of, of the Lake County zoning, zoning ordinance and that the major use permit be denied because there are no applicants as stated in the staff report and, excuse me, the staff report addendum dated July eighth, twenty-twenty-one and that it be denied.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, note the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there's a disagreement with the Planning Commission, appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to five P M. Honorable before the seventh calendar day following the Commission's final determination. Do we have any on-time staff update or office news? Okay, we'll return.